County Commissioners made fourth two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. I direct your attention to the agenda and ask if are there any adjustments?
I'm gonna move to approve the the agenda as presented with the exception of adding an item titled ATV grant program after item three.
Seconded motion. Motion made and seconded. Any further adjustments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion. Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
Me and myself. Motion is in, the agenda is in order. We'd now go to public comment. Is there anybody else here would like to make a public comment? Hearing?
Yes, I would.
Okay, go ahead please.
I have a focus on local government and democracy and how elections work with that. And I'm very concerned about how the procedure is unfolding around the county treasurer. I feel that we need more analysis as to what actually happened. I'm not real happy with the emotional heightened responses and the fact that he was dragged to the newspaper. Matt Michael was dragged to the newspaper. You know, not that he was right or wrong, but that we had to go to a newspaper article to gain support for for finding a financial manager. I don't know if we need a financial manager or not. I know that the county has added on a county administrator at great expense, ninety-five thousand dollars next year a year. And you know, we may need another financial person. I know that in Blue Hill here, we have a separate financial manager who took, it took her.
Your audio went out Rebecca.
Yeah.
This went with, we've lost, this went with, we've lost your audio.
Can you still hear me?
Here we go. You're back again now.
Oh, I was gone. I wonder what I didn't say. Anyway, it took a lot of support for her to be able to put that under her belt. And and so it disturbs me that there's so much fracas over this. And I would like to see more added in the, in making local government better. That is my total aim on this. And and what happens with elected officials, I'm a little concerned that somehow somebody was a write-in. I don't quite know how, we didn't have enough candidates to be put up for county treasurer. I know it's been really hard to find people to run for things. And I do have interest in understanding what needs to go to a professional standard and what needs to stay in elected. But I do wish that there was more discussion and not a lot of emotion around it. That is my whole wish at this point there. I don't think I took up my three minutes. It's nice to see everybody looking healthy. I'm sorry, John, you had that terrible time. I fortunately sailed through it, but maybe at your expense, who knows? So have a good day and I will sign off. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else with a public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Motion is in order to approve the meeting minutes.
I'm gonna move to approve the meeting minutes of the April sixth regular meeting and the April fifteenth special meeting both as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion. Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
And I am myself, motion carries. Item three, we have a couple recognitions this morning. Bob, are you with us here somewhere?
Yeah, they both are. Yeah.
They're together. Yeah, okay. Bob, I'm gonna give you the floor. This is truly an outstanding, an outstanding career and truly worthy of our recognition this morning. Go ahead.
Good morning. I take great pleasure in recognizing David Brady. He's been here for forty years. I don't know if the building was built around him, but he's, I think David's probably one of the last people here from his era. I know I definitely rely on David way more than he wants me to for many things. As far as, you know, he's, he's been a, been a great source, resource for advice, recognition of how things are going here. I can usually, I can usually judge how well I'm doing by what David tells me about how things are happening. So I think we're doing pretty good so far. He hasn't grumbled at me lately, so I think, I think it's very noteworthy and I don't know that we'll ever have another forty-year employee around here, but if we do, I hope they're like David.
Thank you. Appreciate the recognition. I don't think it's fifty from me, but.
David, when you first started, was dispatch in the old control room or was it out in the lobby?
I was in the, like with the jail, right? In that little closet control room thing. I had actually some controls for the jail. If I remember.
Yeah, gentlemen, you wouldn't remember any of this, but back when they rebuilt the jail and opened it in seventy-nine, they had a control room that was also dispatch center. And so when David started, he was not only a dispatcher, but he was the jail control officer and controlled the jail locks from, from that area. It's ironic because physically that sets just about where your dispatch is, doesn't it David?
I love it now.
Just about where that was is where the, and then we moved it out front into the lobby.
Yeah.
Then when we renovated, we built a new jail, we renovated, moved it again. And then thankfully, this last renovation has put him where he is now. It's an outstanding feat. I mean, we just recognized an employee, Stephen Fallon, the other day for thirty-four years and now David for forty. And once again, I'm gonna take credit for having the foresight to find people who want to stay in county government. David, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm gonna move to recognize and thank nine-one-one dispatcher David Brady for his forty years of great service.
Thank you.
Seconded.
They moved and seconded to recognize David for forty years of service. All those in favor. Commissioner Wambacher?
Definitely.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
And I am myself. Congratulations, David.
Thank you David.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
The next person we'd like to recognize is Scott Atkins, our county administrator. Scott, exactly what was your hire date?
The May sixteen. May sixteen.
Of two thousand?
Oh, yeah. Well, whatever five sixteen, right?
Trying to relate that to when I said.
Checking to make sure the math is right.
Well, no, I just, I just kind of relate that. So, yeah, okay, so. Well, I'm impressed with how quickly you, you got your feet under you because I didn't start till January seventeen and you were truly a veteran administrator by the time I arrived. So we congratulate you on being with us for five years. It's unfortunate, I guess the statewide statistics are about, what, five to eight years and then manager moves on and and so I really implore you to consider giving us another five years. Gentlemen?
I move to recognize and thank Hancock County Administrator Scott Atkins for his five years of great service.
Seconded.
They moved and seconded discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Commissioner Wambacher?
Yep, I just wanted to thank Scott again for all he does. I know he is working hard to keep us moving along and especially with COVID, he has outperformed himself. So I just wanted to thank him personally for all he does.
Commissioner Parity, your vote?
Yes.
And I do as well. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott. We truly appreciate your service.
Thank you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, this is a total team effort. So thank you to the department heads and commission. So that's the only way this works.
You know, I, I feel very blessed because we have a great staff of department heads. We have a good board and we have a great administrator. And it's, it's a great time for, I think, for me to be in Hancock County government and I'm truly thankful and your participation, Scott, really rounds out that team. We've added a agenda item as a result of some information that Millard gave us this morning with regards to the ATV grant. If you recall, a couple meetings ago, we agreed to support a grant for the ATV club to get some maintenance work done. Millard, do you want to update us on the status of that situation?
I spoke yesterday, I spoke with the chairman of the Acadia Trail Riders. And they're not ready to move forward on a grant for this year. They're just, the timeframe is too short and they're having trouble getting all the information they need. So they're they're on hold until next year.
So you envision this coming back next year, Millard? I mean, it's.
Yes, I do.
It's money that's available every year then, huh?
Yes.
Well, I think that's unfortunate. I mean, it's, it's out there, it's available. It's too bad that they couldn't get everything together in time. But gentlemen, I guess we can look forward to seeing this again next year, next spring, maybe a little earlier so that they have time enough to get their information together. Millard, thank you. Anything else from the UT, Millard?
Next month will be a big month for the UT. We've got ten contracts up for renewal for July first. I've heard back, out of the ten, I've heard back from three definite yeses. So it's the June meeting will be loaded heavy with contract approvals.
Gentlemen, while we're talking about that, do you want full copies of each contract? If there are no changes except for perhaps the cost?
I prefer just having the cover, usually that first cover, cover page that has the costs unless there's a real change to the contract.
Paul, you probably haven't seen these before. Would you like full copies?
I don't need them. They'd be, you know, they're available, I'm sure. I just like the front page or summary and a recommendation is more important to me.
Okay, Millard, so I think in an effort to cut down on the amount of work you're doing preparing for that meeting, if you just give us a copy of the cover sheet, your recommendation on that, I think that would be suffice, okay?
Okay.
And then if I have questions, I can reach out.
Documents will still be put in our online so that we can access them whenever we need to. So.
Yeah, shared drive.
Yeah.
A year or so ago, we, well, a couple years ago now, maybe, we approved the purchase of some equipment for Millard to help him work on his roads. And he said that he used the, that equipment the other day to do make, I mean, Christian.
Matten Ridge Road.
Matten Ridge Road down in Township Nine. Said it came out very well and held up even despite the rain that came in afterwards. So it's good to see that that equipment is being used and it's, it's working out well. Millard, thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Sheriff, I'm going to turn the floor over to you for some recognitions.
Morning. Thank you, Commissioners. The first one I'd like to do is recognize the retirement of Detective Steve McFarland after thirty-eight years at the U C S. He is not with us today. We had a little lunch last Thursday. And then Saturday, we had a get-together at his family's home to recognize him. And I just like requested the Commissioners would follow that up with recognizing Steve for everything he's done for Hancock County over thirty-eight years. Started as a corrections officer, worked his way to patrol and then was promoted to detective. And quite frankly, he's one of the best detectives in the state.
So I'm gonna move to congratulate Detective Steve McFarland on his retirement and thank him for his thirty-eight years of great service.
Seconded. They moved and seconded. I found it amusing that several of us got an invitation for a surprise retirement party at Steve's house. And I thought that was a great idea. And it was Saturday night. The problem is when they took Steve home Friday afternoon, because they'd taken his cruiser away from him, of course, there was a big white tent on his front lawn. So I kind of gave away the surprise. But we had a very nice get-together over there. Great, great crowd, a lot of fun. And I can only imagine how Steve must feel today after a couple days being home and not in his office and certainly are going to miss Steve around. It's gonna seem funny to not to see him there in the office. Gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor to recognize Steve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion. Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item I have is to recognize a promotion of Deputy Daniel Harland to patrol sergeant. Dan has been with us for five or six years, I believe it is now. Dan started in his law enforcement career as a corrections officer here. And at the time, he wanted to become a patrolman. We didn't have any openings, so he went to work in Bucksport. And he very, came back to us and he's an outstanding leader. He's a great officer and we're proud to promote him to the position of sergeant. And I believe he and his wife Crystal are still, are on here.
Were you gonna have?
Yes, we are. I've got it on the news. Yeah.
Were you gonna have a badge pinning or something, Dan?
We are, Sheriff. We, we just wanted to recognize him here and then we're going to, his wife will pin him out here in front of the banner that we have set up and then put that on our Facebook.
Okay, so we.
And, and we'll get it to, we'll get it to you so we can put it on the county website as well.
I understand. Okay, so that won't be part of the meeting today.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to congratulate Deputy Daniel Harland on his promotion to patrol sergeant. Congratulations, Deputy Harland.
Thank you very much.
Seconded the motion?
Motion made and seconded to congratulate Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion. Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
And I am myself. Congratulations, Dan.
Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
How does the sergeant fit into the hierarchy and then the supervision now? We have two lieutenants.
We have two lieutenants and we now have one sergeant. I'd probably be looking for a second one another year so that we can have unavailable days and nights. And they're responsible to work with with the day-to-day deputies handling complaints and filling in where we need them and also working, you know, taking assignments from the lieutenants. We just have so much paperwork and so much stuff going on that we need another midline supervisor to help with some of those projects that we have going on.
Now, is he gonna be on-call supervisor for the weekend?
That, as soon as we get more training for him, he probably will work into that rotation, yes.
Rebecca, is that part of the job description to reflect the comp time payable for on-call?
I'm, I'm not sure if it's part of the job description. I'm sure it's part of the contract.
Okay, so that's where it should be, in the contract, not in the job description?
I think so. I, I can.
No, okay. I just wanted everybody to understand that at some point when he became on-call, it would be extra compensation and benefit time for being on-call, like the lieutenants get. Okay, that's suffice. Very good. Congratulations, Dan.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
The third one that I have is recognize promotion of Deputy Jacob Day to the position of detective. He came to us from Bar Harbor and has, was recently assigned, or he's coming from an assignment at M D E A. He came through the process as the leading candidate in that. And we'd like to congratulate and ask for the Commissioners to recognize Jake for his promotion to detective. He's stepping into a tough spot. He's, he's in the slot that Steve McFarland just retired from. So Dan, Jake is a good investigator and he gained a lot of that investigative skills from working down to M D E A for the last few years. So he will be, I expect him to become a very, very proficient and talented detective.
Great. So I'm gonna move to congratulate Deputy Jacob Day on his promotion to detective. And congratulations, Jacob.
Thank you.
Seconded that motion?
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion. Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
And I am myself. Jake, congratulations on your promotion. Scott, what are you going to do with regards to the vacancy he left in the?
We, you've, you've approved us to advertise for that position. We did some interviews last, yes, last week. And hopefully after we have our discussion about the airport security, get permission, tentative permission to hire there, we'll offer, we'll have tentative offers after doing backgrounds to two candidates. They're not, they're not blue pins, Commissioner. They, they will have to attend the academy. But from the feedback that I received from the interview, that they're two very qualified people.
So with regards to M D E A, though, you won't fill that until you get your other patrol position filled?
That's what I'd like to do. Yes, that's right. And, and we've had application for that as well.
Application for the DEA task force?
Just send down to M D E A, correct.
Very good. Did I call the motion that I did, didn't I?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Congratulations, Jake.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congrats, Jake.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the discussion with regards to the accreditation program. Sheriff, you have the floor.
I do. Thank you. I brought this up in a previous meeting and just had a few details. I've sent you, or you should have a packet summarizing the cost. So what I'm really asking for this year, or what I'm asking for at this meeting is a commitment from the Commissioners that when we move forward this, this is a multi-year program and would continue. Once we're accredited, we have, it would be our responsibility to meet all the standards for accreditation going forward. There'll be, Ben, you should have the cost, the initial cost and what the three-year costs are. And those were from quotes from two vendors, Power D M S, who was a software supplier that we would utilize, and also Dirigo Security LLC, who would be working with us with our policies and procedures. And with, with that being said, I believe he's on here. Sean O'Leary is who I've been dealing with, with Dirigo LLC. And I would ask that the Commissioners would allow him to speak and give you a brief description from the ground up on how this process works. So I believe he's on here.
Yes, I am.
Mr. O'Leary, if you'd like to, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, everybody, for having me. Like Sheriff King said, I work for Dirigo Safety. And we were contracted by the main chiefs of police association to run M LEAP, which is the statewide accreditation. And just to give an overview of the accreditation process in the main, it's a voluntary process. Being accredited means that the agency has policies and maintaining those policies on best practices within law enforcement, not only in Maine and within the nation. It's an ongoing program. Dirigo Safety took over the program back in September. And since then, there's been a renewed interest in the program. So far, we have nine agencies that are accredited. But I think what the key point is, is since that we took over and we're marking it and we're, have a good partnership with the main chiefs and the main sheriffs, we have twenty departments that are in the process of being accredited. These standards that were developed several years ago were made specifically for any department in Maine. And that any main department could achieve these standards very relatively easily. They were main standards, makes the departments a more professional. And in the time of, of what we're seeing throughout the nation regarding civil protests, lack of transparency on law enforcement and with everything else is going on, being accredited is really essential for every law enforcement agency, not only in, in the nation, but particularly in Maine. We have a very professional reputation in Maine and being accredited just increases it even more. There's about a hundred and sixty-seven standards and several chapters. And they go over everything from administration and the organization, professional standards, mandated certain types of training. Those mimic the academy. But because of what's going on throughout the nation, those standard trainings are already in place. Goes everything from the use of force, personnel matters, evidence areas. So it's, it's essential for departments to have, to get accredited because the agencies that we've been working with and even the agencies that have gone through it have truly decided that the accreditation process really made them better. And it really made that their policies and procedures were really tied down to accreditation. One of the things is that the, the cost, main accreditation compared to national accreditation. For instance, the county of Cumberland County Sheriff's Office is a Kalia accredited department. They're paying on average about four thousand dollars a year, every year, just for accreditation. That doesn't include everything else. M LEAP, or main accreditation, was specifically designed so smaller agencies or agencies that did not have a lot of funding could afford it. And it's only five hundred dollars a month, excuse me. It's five hundred dollars a year for accreditation, which we are the lowest state cost throughout the nation. On average, accreditation fees go anywhere from a thousand dollars a year to up to three thousand dollars a year. So main accreditation is very affordable. One of the other things is the sheriff has elected to look into is Power D M S. And the reason why Power D M S is an excellent platform is it's just not good for accreditation. It's good for policy management. It's good for training and training, tracking. And one of the things is that having Power D M S for us to do an assessment, we do two-thirds of the assessment from our, from our office. Because of those standards, he's uploading his, and his proof to Power D M S. So the assessors can, can take a look at them. When we do an onsite, it really only takes about four hours for us to, to do an assessment. And there is no cost for the assessment for us to go up there. Because our assessors are supplied by, by participating agencies. They're supported by their chiefs or their sheriffs. And they go on the department's payroll. One of the things, one of the things that I think is really important is not only having policies, it's what Emily does, it forces the, the agency to show proof that they're actually following the, the policies. So, so for instance, if they are, if they have to, like one standard says bias-based policing training has to occur every two years, the agencies have to prove by submitting a roster that they attended bias-based policing. And that just proves that they are attending those, those trainings and meeting those standards. I think the other most important thing is, is it gives a sense of pride to those agencies that they've reached the pinnacle of law enforcement in Maine. Because more and more agencies are going towards accreditation. And I know with the Maine Municipal Association, they give a fifteen percent discount for liability insurance. And I hope that the Maine Sheriff's Association seeks to get a reduction from the risk pool. Currently, we have three sheriff's departments that are going through the accreditation process right now. Cumberland County is already a accredited through Kalia. And if Hancock elects to go through, through accreditation, the numbers will grow. And I really believe that it is good management for, for the risk pool to give, to give at least some type of break for those agencies that work hard towards accreditation because it only assists them. The reason why accreditation is, is very important because it's a risk management tool. It reduces liability in law enforcement. And we all know about liability, law enforcement. And we all know about liability, uh, law enforcement is probably the number one highest liability department in the state. And that's why Maine Municipal uh really wanted departments to become accredited. And I really hope that they do, that the risk pool does um see an investment in supplying a um, a break for liability insurance. Um, I'm open up to any questions, but that's like, that's an overview of what's going on with accreditation and with policies.
Sean, um, can you speak a little bit to the idea of uh it assisting with transparency?
Sure, absolutely. One of the things is regarding um transparency is, and, and the sheriff probably got, got a, a freedom of of information uh request regarding all personnel matters and disciplinary. Transparency with M LEAP is, everything is transparent. Um, their updated policies, their policies that are, are relevant to today's law enforcement, today's culture in, in Maine. Um, and it, and again, going back to the proofs, is that those polit- that the sheriff's office is proving that they're doing what the policy, um, without being accredited, you um, you really can't prove that you're following the policies unless you dive in deeper into it. And that's one of the things that, that accreditation does. It gives full transparency to not only the agency, the elected officials, but more importantly, especially now, is the community that they uh service.
How, how do, so in the end, how does the community have access to, to, to those documents?
All, all, all they have to do is file a Freedom of Information Act to, uh, request to the sheriff. Uh, they can supply those, those proofs, um, and it, it's very achievable.
Alright, thank you. About your comment on the five hundred dollars a year, that's a fee from Derigo Safety, is that correct?
No, that is, so every agency that, that applies for accreditation, um, that fee goes to the Maine uh Chiefs of Police. We do get a percentage out of that, that was through a contract negotiations, because we're, we're managing the entire program.
Okay, so there's a five hundred fee there. Do you have any idea what uh Power D M S annual fee is after the third year?
No, I, that, that would, that would, y- you would have to talk to Power D M S. Um, we, we work with Power, Power D M S, but w- we don't have like a business relationship with them.
It's safe to say, though, that's probably a few thousand to several thousand, correct?
I mean, it really depends. I, I, I know from past experience when I was a chief, because I actually brought Power D M S when I was at the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. It really depends on the, the number of licenses and like everything else, everything is negotiable. But one of the, I, I guess one of the key points about Power D M S is it's just not for accreditation and it's just not for policies. Um, it will assist uh the sheriff in managing tho- those policies because on average, uh, law enforcement policies range from a- anywhere from eighty to, to ninety-five uh policies per agency. And managing those for like a review process becomes very complex and daunting. And what I've seen with some of the contracts that, that I've been working with for agencies regarding policies is they just go by the wayside. And unfortunately, uh, a lot of these policies are brought up during civil litigations and that they're outdated and uh to current standards. So with Power D M S, it track, it want it, it tracks um the individual from reviewing it and signing it. In addition to that, we advocate that uh a, a knowledge-based test uh be incorporated with the policy, which Power D M S provides. Um, in addition to that, it has a, a training mechanism where you can track uh individuals' training records. If I can use an example, when I was in Winslow, uh, we had a officer involved shooting and the Attorney General's Office as part of their, their investigation was they wanted all the records of the individual that got involved in the shooting, which was one, which was one of my officers. And it only took me five minutes to do that. Uh, other departments, it took them a couple days. The other good thing about Power D M S is I'm not sure if the county has ever been, uh, had an inspection from the Bureau of Labor. Um, Bureau of Labor loves Power D M S because they can just go in there and produce a document. So these policies are just not for M LEAP. They're the third, they're, they're for the thirteen mandatory policies. Any policies that have a um, a M LEAP standard, but also Bureau of Labor policies and, and et cetera.
Sheriff, do you have any idea? So like, when we look at the costs on the Power D M S, there's that big jump that happens between the second and third year. Do you, do you know what the, like, why, why we have such a large jump?
I do, and that goes back to what Sean said, that the original quote that they gave me was higher than I was willing to negotiate with. So I negotiated those first two years down to where they are. And, and the third year is uh those costs are because that's what they're going to now be charging everybody else. So we're going to get the benefit of a discount the first two years. Then the third year, that jump is going to be what they originally wanted to charge me for the first and the second year. So they, they are, you can work with them, uh, but that's why it'll go to there. And I, I don't know what the percentage is, but when I talked to Sean, the cost, the twenty-five hundred dollar cost uh for being with Derigo, he said would probably fairly consistent. If there were increases, they would be s- small and minor. And I don't know what the percentage increase would be year to year, but I do know we've had the Spillman program for years and years and years. Uh, and that was a great investment, just and I, like, I believe this would be a great investment. And there are the cost increase that come, you know, the Spillman cost increase, uh, but usually between five and eight percent a year. So, you know, I would suspect that they may be in that vicinity, but they may be a little lower too, so. I, I would guess from my conversation, whoop, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, if I could make one, I, I think how Power, Power D M S is doing, once you lock into a price, um, I don't think it goes up. Um, I've seen a lot of departments, and I'm not, I'm just speculating on, on that. I'm seeing some, some departments um that they've maintained their, their current pricing. Regarding Derigo, um, if I could speak specifically for the policies, every agency needs, if you don't go towards accreditation, okay, that's fine. But every agency needs updated policies. It is, um, it's imperative and particularly in, in today's world. Um, and regarding uh our price, because it's a two-year contract for us to, to rewrite all, all the policies, sit down with the sheriff and his team and try, and to build policy specific for uh his agency. Uh, it's a five thousand dollar investment. Now, compared to um other um companies throughout, on the East Coast, there's a company called uh M R I out of New Hampshire. They just uh billed um the city of Westbrook twenty thousand dollars just to rewrite uh twenty policies. Uh, Waldo County hired Drummond and Woodson, and they paid, I think it was twenty-five thousand. Uh, Eric Daigle, which is a law firm out of Connecticut, has been doing work in New Hampshire. Um, he's charging two hundred and fifty dollars an hour per policy. Um, so Derigo was founded on providing uh, uh, real, relevant services to main departments, because we know, because we know funding is, is difficult. But we care about our law enforcement partners and our communities, and that's why our prices, I would say, very low.
I'm sorry, who?
Go ahead, Bella.
Um, you took over in September, you are a startage of business in September. The company previous to you, did they go out of business or did you buy them out, or what was the transition? What's this?
No, we, so Derigo Safety's been, been in business since uh two thousand seventeen. Uh, at the same time, the Maine Chiefs Association and the Maine Sheriff's Association Association came up, came up with this, with this statewide accreditation. And they hired a lady to manage the program. Um, but it, everybody was, I remember when I was in Winslow, I was, I had clear, I had accreditation experience and I was ready to move forward. Uh, but unfortunately, that lady took on too much at her uh current job. Uh, and the program literally stalled, and there was a lot of frustration. And then when I retired uh in this past July, after thirty-six years in law enforcement, I, I um spoke to the company president and says, listen, the state really needs this accreditation. Um, there's a lot of agencies that want to do it, uh, but there's no, um, there's, there's nobody that, that's facilitating it. So we reached out to the Maine Chiefs, uh, they put out an R F P, and since then, um, they've been extremely happy and within, within uh three months of signing the contract, uh, we had three departments already signed up. Um, and we had two meetings this week with, with two other departments.
You were, there were nine m- municipal agencies that have been accredited, but you didn't, they didn't go through your company. They was, they were accredited before you took over, is that correct?
Some of them were clear, so uh Falmouth, Augusta and Berwick, they started, uh, th- those were the three that came on board once we took over.
Yeah, but that's a three-year process, so I mean, you, you haven't been doing this for three years. So he must have sat it under this lady and continued with you, is that correct?
Um, I, I guess you would have to ask them, they were trying to get questions done, answered by this, this lady, and she wasn't returning her emails. Um, and by the time that it started, um, we took over, it's, it's just really exploded.
Um, but my question is, is that, did they get, did they finish their accreditation under her or you?
Under us, the three.
He started with her and finished with you?
Right.
The reason I'm asking is, is I had some questions about uh, oh, things like, can you give us an estimate of how much officer time is involved in testing and training under this program?
Testing and training, they're, essentially, the sheriff's office is, is already doing the things that, that should be, should be doing, there's, there's added. Um, reg- that's one of the reasons why the sheriff want, would like to hire us to, to um review, update and develop his policies. Um, because he's already indicated, uh, with all the paperwork, there is really no time for a sheriff or a chief to rewrite the policies. Um, so, uh, okay, Sheriff?
No, I was just going to say with my conversations with Sean, that he will review and update those policies, and then he'll ship them to us. Uh, which, which, that was my biggest fear when this really started, that, that I was going to have to have somebody that's going to rewrite these policies. Derigo, when we, if we contract with them, we'll do all of those policies, they'll send them to us, we'll review them through our supervisory staff, and we have the ability to add onto those policies, make them more restrictive, but we cannot have less than what M LEAP requires. So in other words, we'll say that um we have a, a high-speed chase policy, and Emily recommends this. We may, uh, after looking at that, say, well, let's not fight as um that we want. We want to add a few more things into that. We have the ability to do that. But when those documents come from Derigo and come from Sean, we'll look at them. Then we put them into uh Power D M S and sa- and that will send a message to each of the patrolmen who review them and have to sign off on them, which is the accountability piece that Sean's talking about. That if we've got to say for a hundred and sixty policies that we have to vet, we've got twenty deputies that have to sign off on a hundred and sixty policies, and we can document that. And if somebody asks, um, you know, does uh Scott Kane, has he had firearms training? And how long has he had that? We can go back because it archives all, all our history and it has it there, so. Um, you know, this, one of the things, if you look around the country, when law enforcement is, is sued many times, it's failure to train. And this forces us to go through the training, it forces us on an annual basis to review these policies and make sure that we are standing to the highest policy. You know, a couple of meetings ago, I sat through the auditor, going through uh the audit of the county. And it seemed like every other statement from him was best practice, best practice, best practice. That's exactly what we're doing here by going for accreditation. We are going to have the best practice. And, and quite honestly, if we have to hold our, our, our accounting and our financials to best practice, I, I submit that we should be doing the same thing for our law enforcement, because every one of my deputies are out there in a cruiser, every one of them are out there with a firearm. Every one of them have, have uh, you know, training how to deal with mental health. We need to be able to document that in case we, God forbid, get in one of those situations.
Alright, gentlemen, I'm trying to, to nail down some cost here, so enough of the rhetoric for a minute, please. I'm looking at the deliverables under the contract, it's, it's been proposed. And under Power D M S subscriber only, it says developing a knowledge-based test to be assigned to the offices and whatnot. So are we talking about additional testing? And is this payable under overtime? I mean, is this additional cost to the department for these tests?
No, part of the contract with us is I develop the tests. So, for instance, if you have, there's a use of force policy, uh, which is a mandatory and an M LEAP. I develop a test based on that. When the, when the deputy goes in there to review the policy, they have to take the test to um, to get credit for reviewing the um, the, the policy. Regarding the, the money, I just wanted to say is that this is a team effort. Um, it's just not going to be one individual that's going to be working with this at the sheriff's office. Like the sheriff has indicated, it's multiple people doing, it's, the, the workload is spread out. And, and, and to be honest with you, and it, ju- just one thing, if to be honest, is um, this money is a lot cheaper than paying a, a civil suit.
Um, but Sheriff, you said that you want to bring on Dick Bishop to uh help implement the policy.
I, I, I did say that originally, because I was under the assumption that we were going to have to write those policies ourselves. It's going to be more cost efficient to have, have Sean and Derigo write those policies, submit them. But we would also use Dick uh to help manage that, because, you know, if we're going to take on all these policies, somebody's going to have to manage that. And quite honestly, he would be a good resource to review the policies that Sean has submitted to us and that we have approved. And if, if you go into the money portion of that, he'd be paid out of the part-time budget that's our, money that's already in my budget. He'd be paid the same way uh if, if for any other projects that we use him for.
The uh deliverables call for, for your department to provide a contact person, is this going to be Dick Bishop?
Probably would be me to begin with, and if there was something that, that would, I would assign it to Dick or assign it to, uh, you know, if it's a training issue, Corey oversees our trainings. And to get back to the testing portion of it, the mandatory trainings that we currently take online now, at the end of every one of those, we have to complete a test and have to complete them at a certain percentage. So it would be no different uh with the ones that, that Sean sends us and the ones we currently have to take that have mandated.
It's not the difference, it's the addition that I was concerned about. So there is additional testing, correct?
It would be with additional policies, yes.
Okay.
Um, am I up?
Go ahead, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I have the luxury of h- having a similar presentation in Bar Harbor when I was there. And one of the things that, that I think is lost here a little bit is that um, really, we're talking about three different things that get us to the same end result. I mean, you can get accredited without um, without P- Power D M S and uh contracting with Derigo. But really, the, let's take Power D, D M S for, for instance, first. Uh, training is, I mean, I, I, I just know enough to be dangerous, but what I do know is that training is hard to document and hard to do in an organized fashion. And this Power D M S enables that, and um, you know, knowing enough to be dangerous, I think that this is a lot of bang for the buck, because I think we probably would be expend, just on the, the training and the documenting of the training. we probably would be expend, just on the, the training and the documenting of the training, um, i- is, you know, we know what that cost is moving forward. As far as the policies, it's a second set of eyes on everything we do, which I think is important. Whether that, you know, it doesn't matter where it originates, uh, whether it's within our, within the sheriff's department and filters up to, to Deargo or vice versa, it's, it's double sets of eyes o- on our policies, and I think that's important. Regarding the testing, it is, you know, it's documented. It's not only did the, um, deputy or officer, um, review the, uh, policy, but he was tested on the policy, and that's documented. And I happen to think that that's very important. Uh, yes, it's, it's additional expense, but boy, we all see what's going on in, in, in the world we're living in, and, I think this is how we, we professionalize this. Now, we could take this apart, we could do, you know, uh, contract with, with Deargo, not do Power DMS or, you know, mix and match, but I really think that we'd be spending more money. Um, and, you know, again, having the luxury of seeing this, uh, presentation, you know, twice, from, you know, different perspectives and different people, I fully support this, I, 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 you know, I don't like that it costs money, but you know, everything costs money. And I, I think, I know for a fact that this is cheaper than having, you know, a law firm do it, or, or some other organization. Um, I know this was originally taken on by the main chiefs, it was too, too big of a, a bite for them to handle, and I think that's why Deargo is here today. So I, I support this, I, 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 um, I really think that this is going to be a savings moving forward. Um, w- we need to get to this level of professionalism, and I, I quite frankly, don't see a, a better bang for the buck to get there.
Well, I echo Paul's feelings on it, and I do, uh, really wanna thank the sheriff for being proactive and, uh, reaching out and starting to do the investigation into, into getting the accreditation. Again, I just think, uh, it does seem to be a good fit between the two, uh, the two contracts. I like the idea that it's gonna be organized and maintained, and some of that maintenance, it sounds like the maintenance is gonna be a lot easier, uh, help us out from liability, and, uh, uh, obviously, I'm also, uh, I make sure that we keep, uh, transparency, and I think this helps to do that.
The last point, I, I, I forgot the dispatch, and when I saw Mr. Connery moving around there, it just reminded me, thank you. And, uh, there, there's a, there's policies around dispatch, and i- if I'm not mistaken, and, and, you know, all those get interwoven here, is that, is, is my recollection there correct?
Yes, that is correct, there, there are subtle standards that require, um, the dispatch, um, center to have, uh, mandated training and also certain other items.
And, and, and Power DMS, uh, incorporates all of that?
That's correct.
So Sheriff, I, as far as I see it, you know, judging from your memo, you, you're covering this, these costs under your current budget for this year. Uh, so you say, you, you're, you stated that, you know, you're really looking for support, um, of the program moving forward. Now, you know, I, I have a mo, it's pretty, I have a motion that says that, you know, will, that we support it and, you know, moving forward, but, you know, anything can happen in the budget process, because we can't make promises there. Uh, so I'm ready to, to, you know, throw out sort of a motion that, um, and then we can wordsmith it. Uh, and the motion is to support seeking accreditation for the Hancock County Sheriff's Office, uh, moving forward. Is that too simple? Is that, is that what you're looking for?
That's really what I'm looking for, Commissioner, is, is that we'll look at this going forward, because it is, you know, this isn't gonna be something that's gonna be done by December twenty twenty-one. This is gonna be a lengthy process, um, to do this, and as I say, with, um, the, the temperament around the country, the, the more trained, uh, and that we can document what we're doing and be accountable to the people of Hancock County, uh, it, it's a benefit, there's no question about it. And with, with the, the flavor of Augusta right now, I would foresee, I, I, you know, I don't have a crystal ball or anything like that, but I would just see in the future that the legislature very well may mandate this, that, and, and you'll see small departments disappear because they don't have the ability to do that.
Yeah, in fact, there's been talk of that, is, is what I understand.
That's correct.
Paul, you mentioned somewhere that, uh, you were diverting money from a project that you had funded, that you had planned to implement and decided to divert that. What was that other project?
Well, we've got, we've got money in our budget right now, uh, that we can use for this project. Uh, and we'll just have to put off some of the things that we had thought we were going to do this year. Nothing specific, I can tell you, but looking at our budget, our budget's healthy, we have funds in there now. Uh, and we will work around to find the money that was, that's necessary.
Rebecca, did we get a second to the motion?
No, I, I, I didn't hear one. Was that, was that the motion you wanted, Commissioner Perry?
Yes, how about I read it? That was, uh, I'm gonna move to support seeking accreditation of the Hancock County Sheriff's Office moving forward.
A second to motion?
Okay, so the motion made and seconded in the discussion. Gentlemen, we've heard a lot, and I don't think it's anybody that wouldn't say it is very beneficial to be recognized at this level of professionalism, this high le, high standard and whatnot. But I gotta remind you that so far, only ten agencies have, are accredited out of a hundred and forty-six in the state. And despite the fact that, uh, there's been a lot of rhetoric this morning with regards to gloom and doom on not doing this, well, there's a hundred and thirty-six out there who are not doing this, and you kind of, kind of say, are we, are we, are we smarter than they are? Are we more progressive than they are? Are we richer than we are? And the other problem I have this morning is, is that we are always often faced with emergency and emergent needs in the middle of the budget year for issues. Furnace blowing up, it needs to be replaced and so on, scrambling to find money for that. And this is a discretionary program. This is not a mandatory program, it's, it's very valuable, we can assure that it's, it's a good program to have. Nevertheless, it is discretionary, and discretionary programs should be reserved for budget preparation time. And so the department head organizes that, brings it to us, explains it. We agree to it, we budget it, and then it gets placed in the budget, rather than the department head coming to us in the middle of the year and asking us to approve a discretionary program. And I have a problem with that, and setting a, this, um, uh, this, uh, policy where we will accept discretionary programs in the middle of the budget year. So I'm, uh, I, I am concerned about that. The cost is the big one, and the cost comes down to the cost of the program, the total cost versus the value. Uh, there's no, there's no doubt how valuable this program is, but I mean, the first three years, just in DMS and, and Deargo, it is, is, is over twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, we don't know what Dick Bishop's gonna cost us. There's a one-time fee of six hundred dollars to the main chiefs, and then there's another five hundred a year for every year after that. Uh, there, there may be additional overtime cost in deputies' testing. The risk pool has already been consulted and says that there will not, there is not, uh, a deduction for taking accreditation, and probably wouldn't be, because the uh, experience rate wouldn't be reduced by this because of the low experience rate by the sheriff's department anyway, so there wouldn't be a, uh, a reduction in our liability for the sheriff's department because of being mandatory. And so I'm having a real problem at this time coming to, the real, coming to the resolution that I can support this in light of the cost and some of the other issues. I'm also concerned that, uh, the company that we're selecting has only been doing this since last September. I'd like to see a more proven track record, and, uh, before we get involved. And, uh, I just, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just having problems supporting this. Is there any further discussion?
Just, just to address a couple of the points, Mr. Chair. The, the budgeting process, I, I get that, but, you know, we, it's current, it's, this year gonna be covered under the sheriff's budget and, and moving forward. You know, we really can't make promises, you know, through the budgeting process, other than we support the program, which, which is what this motion does. Concerning the cost of Deargo, it's twenty-five hundred dollars a year. Uh, because remember, Power DMS enables us to do other things that, quite frankly, we should be doing. Uh, so I don't feel that we're rolling, you know, some very heavy dice. I, I, um, I think that, that this is important. There are very few, uh, you're correct, there are very few departments that are accredited now, it's a fairly new program. I think there, this, there is a buzz in the law enforcement community, I'm told, to, for departments to do this. It may become mandated. Um, I know we can't bank on that, but I really think that professionalizing law enforcement in Hancock County, not that it's not professional now, because it is, but I think that, you know, this bring, this is one step further to, um, and I think it's a, it's an important step in, in, in today's world.
And again, I support it, I really feel, uh, when it comes to the budgetary process, it, we, we, it can get worked out, and I'm sure the, um, uh, committee will see the value in it. Uh, and I know the sheriff will be there in those discussions to, uh, to, uh, discuss the, uh, pros of it, so I have no concerns that we can't work out a budget on it. So it has my support.
Are we ready to call a vote, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
I'm gonna vote in opposition, the motion carries two to one. This time, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we direct the sheriff to provide us with a quarterly report with regards to the status of this program, to include all costs associated with that quarter. Also, I would, uh, ask that we direct a request from Commissioner Wambacher that any forms need to be signed with regards to, uh, providing this accreditation program, that he be authorized on, on behalf of the chair to sign those. That's my motion, if I have a second? Second it? Discussion?
I have, uh, I have a question on, you know, the quarterly reporting, this is not a, you know, I, I, I would assume that the, there would be, the sheriff would include something on the process, but I, I, I mean, do you have sp, you know, costs and, I don't know, is, is that too much? I, 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 it, it is not a fast process, and, and, you know, there's probably only gonna be two or three checks written here per year. I mean, it is, I'm wondering if this, if that process is, is not too cumbersome.
Sheriff, are you opposed to providing us an update on, on how you're doing with this, to include the cost, any cost associated with that?
Well, the cost will be, when we sign the contract, we'll pay the payment, uh, to Deargo and Power DMS, and that'll be covered for a year, so that's, that's pretty simple, uh, as far as any other costs.
Not that simple, it's not, I mean, when you read the details behind this and whatnot, we have evaluators coming up that, uh, Mr. O'Leary said that, uh, would be part of the, uh,
That's correct, and he explained to us that he can.
They're going to have to pay, uh, lodging, meals, while they're here and whatnot, and so there are costs, and, and we're going to give you a blank check and say, go ahead and fill it out and whatnot. I'd like to know what this program is going to cost us over the course of three years, and, and, and the cost is not gonna be in what we pay DMS and what we pay Deargo safety, it's gonna be these incidental costs that go with it.
I, I'll defer to Sean, and he can tell you what those costs are now.
There is no cost for, uh, the assessors, there's no lodging, there's no meals, there's absolutely, the individual departments pay for those themselves. Um, that has been agreed upon by all the chiefs, um, since we've done the last three. Um, the, the other thing is, is now CLIA requires that, but we do not.
Okay, I apologize for making a assertion, I'm only reading the sheriff's letter here that says those costs include lodging and meals for several evaluators, I'm sorry.
And that's the information that I was originally given.
And you can see why I'm concerned about incidental cost. So, you know, I mean, which ones are we gonna be tasked with, and which ones aren't we?
Well, and the, the other, I, I, I understand the intent of the, of the motion and support it, but I, you know, it's the details here that, you know, he, I don't see that the sheriff can be given a blank check, he, he has to live within his budget. Uh, we do know what the costs of, you know, the contracts are in front of us. I mean, I, I, I'm just worried about getting in the minutia of things here, I, I, you know, if the, if the sheriff starts blowing his budget and, and things get out of hand, then, you know, I, I don't think our problem is this program, but the sheriff in that instance, but that's not happening, and I don't see it happening.
Sheriff, is there, uh, the, the cost of, uh, Mr. Bishop? Is that something you can kind of, kind of keep us somewhat, um, apprised of maybe during those quarterly meetings?
That should come upstairs with payroll, yes, but if you want it specifically saved out, it is a memo or an item, yes, but.
I just, I just kind of want, it'd be nice to know, like, what, I know he, there's gonna be other feat, uh, functions that he does, but if you can at least give us an idea of, like, what percentage you think is contributed to the, to the accreditation program? Maybe that would help assuage some of the concerns.
If I could make one, one statement, just to give you an overview of how this policy works, uh, this process, is every two weeks, I schedule a meeting with the sheriff uh, during business hours, and we go over a selected number of policies, and we work through those policies. Um, and by the end of the day, or by the end of the meeting, uh, those policies are pretty much ready to, to go. Um, so there's really no personnel cost, except for his time and anybody he invites during those meetings, because that's part of the contract, that, um, we provide tho, those services. Regarding the, taking the, the exams and the policies, um, deputies, one good thing about Power DMS, it's a web-based system, and, so they're gonna be doing that while they're already working, and it, and it's not a long, um, uh, process to read a policy and then to take in an exam. So the, the personnel costs, um, I, I, I really can't think that there, there may be, uh, anything substantial, um, whatever, because I'm doing the majority of the work, and along with the sheriff.
And the accounting of that, I think would get a little complicated, and, and it possibly get skewed. So I, I, okay, so that, that addresses the first part of your motion, Mr. Chair. The, the second part is the, the signing of the contracts and, 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 uh, I forgot the other wording, but that's already in, uh, Mr. Wambacher's already authorized to sign things in your absences, I understand, is that correct?
Uh, no, we.
Specifically.
It has, has to be specific to each instance, so.
Oh, it does, okay.
In other words, it's just like if it was an airport document, I'd be, we'd have to authorize somebody else to sign.
Yeah, so, so I, I'm gonna have a hard time just because of the minutia of, of supporting this motion. Um, I mean, the signing, I guess I would, I would support, um, you know, if needed, but I, I, I'm not sure why that's there, but, um, you know, since we're talking specifically about this motion, I, I, I have a hard time supporting this motion just because of the minutia.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the mo, call the motion, all in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher, are you in favor?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry, are you in favor?
No.
And I am in favor, motion carries two to one. Is there anything else with regards to your cred- Is there anything else with regards to accreditation program?
Nothing that I have, Commissioner.
Hearing none, then we'll move on with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, I, I think that's the, I don't know, but it's about the vehicles. We ordered, we were approved and ordered four Tahos in December of last year. And last week, I called Leo down at Quark, who, who was awarded the bid and asking what the timeframe was and when are we going to get these vehicles? Well, he told me that he did not have them and he did not have any notification from General Motors when they were going to be made or when they were going to be shipped. And he gave me the name of GMC, the Colonial Motor Group in Plymouth, Massachusetts. And he told me that they currently have vehicles on the ground there and they have more coming. And with him telling me that, I think he kind of was, without coming out and saying that, was saying that he didn't think he was going to get any Tahos and we would be left holding the bag. Lieutenant Cody contacted the Colonial Motor Group. They do have the Tahos on the ground as we speak. They are holding four of them that meet almost all of the specifications that we have, that we had requested. And the items that were not in the specifications of the bids that we really, that we put out, with the backseats will be cloth and they won't be vinyl. There was a couple wiring harnesses that would have come from the factory that we'll have to have wired when we have the vehicles put together. And they don't have remote start. That's basically the difference between those vehicles. We talked with Colonial Motor Group. They will take our two trucks that we were going to trade. They'll allow us $11,750 for each of the two Tahoe, excuse me, of the Dodge pickups. And the bid price that Quark was awarded for the four Tahos was $134,825.16. With the trades and the pricing at Colonial Motor Group, we would pay $134,015. So there's roughly $810 less that we would be spending. What I'm asking for is consideration or approval to purchase those four vehicles in light of Quark probably not going to be able to get them. And as I said, in my conversation with Leo, he said that, you know, if he gets them, you know, when, if we back out of it, he's not going to get stuck with them. He's had other requests and he risks, wishes that he had ordered more to have on the ground to sell to other agencies. So we would not be harming Quark. We'd be saving another $800. What I'm asking for is permission to purchase those four and so that we can incorporate those into our fleet.
So a couple of questions I have, obviously with the, with the wiring harness and the remote start and all that, that, that's not included in here, so probably we'll be spending a little more just to make up those differences.
We would, you know, we traditionally have our vehicles outfitted up to grounds. And, and what that would mean is they would have to run the wiring, you know, like they have for most of the other vehicles that we have.
If we just stuck, stuck with Quark, the action that we took, you, you get a vehicle that, that you, you spec and that you want, that he didn't, did he, he didn't come out and say he wasn't going to make that timeframe?
No, no, he didn't. He said now he's looking at probably at least July if he gets them. And, and why I say he's kind of telling me that he's not going to get them is why would he give me another dealer to contact? You know, I mean, this is a competitive business. It's a bid process. I don't know what the markup is there. But if I'd been awarded a bid, I don't think I would suggest that you contact other dealers looking for the vehicles. So he hasn't been able to get them since December. If you watched the, the news the other night, that General Motors and Ford are having a difficult time obtaining chips, which is what Leo told me is the big problem here to finish outfitting those vehicles. It's some type of chip that makes the vehicle run or whatever. So I guess it's the bird in the hand is worth doing the, you know what I mean, where I'm going with that. So they have them. They're holding them for us pending the outcome of this meeting.
So you're recommending that we do this?
I am, I am.
How soon are they going to, they're, they're holding them now. Are they delivering them up here to us?
No, we'd have to, because we've got trades, we would take, we'd take, four of us would ride down and drop those off and drive the other four back.
So, so you'd be a couple of weeks without vehicles because it must take a couple of weeks to outfit them?
Yeah, it would take time and actually he would outfit them down there for us, he said. And, and he said if we bought them from him in the future, he'd set them up any way we wanted them set up. He'd stripe them any way we wanted them striped, because that would be included in the cost. But he, he's got them now and it's just a matter of driving down and picking them up and driving back.
Is the striping and all that included in this cost or?
No, this is just the basic vehicle, Commissioner.
Okay.
But I think what Scott said was though, if he did those things, there would be additional costs.
Right.
That's what I didn't understand, yeah.
Right, I, I'm sorry. If, if we bought them, say another year, we included them in the bid process. And at this price, I think we should. And I agree with what Commissioner Pla considered in the past. I'd like to, I'd like to spend as much money as I can out of our budget locally. But ultimately, he hasn't even seen these pickups that were trading, they're spares. And they've got some tall miles on them and he's willing to give us a, they're about $750, I believe, roughly more than, than we were going to get in trade before. So I, I would ask permission to, to purchase those from Colonial Motor Group in, in Plymouth, Mass.
Well, I said back when we were going to purchase here, you know, originally I said that I'd like to purchase locally as best I can. Once we get outside the county, I don't care whether it's Portland or Massachusetts, quite honestly. I think the, the interesting thing here is, is that he has them, they're available, we can get them. There won't be a saving. I mean, by the time he spends going down, coming back and putting the extra things, there won't be any savings. But it's like he says, it's a bird in the hand. Those are there. He doesn't have to wait because even if he didn't get them till July or August, it would still be after Labor Day before he got them straight and, and set up. And so now he can get going and he's not going to be without any cars, Paul, because he's not replacing first line vehicles with these. So in other words, he's not trading in first line. These two pickups are spares, correct, Scott?
That, that's correct. What we will do?
He's got the time to take these to the, the shops, get them equipped and striped and assigned. And so it, without having to take cars off the front line.
Okay, the equipment is set in here in the drill room now to outfit them. And it's just a phone call to the, to the dealer that stripes them up. And, you know, if we have more than one, we can take, what we traditionally do is take them up and drop them off and they work them in and get them done for us, so.
Okay, so I'm going to move to purchase Chevy Tahoe Cruisers from Colonial, Colonial Motor Group as recommended by the sheriff, provided we have no liabilities concerning the bid awarded to Quark Auto Group. You touched on that, but I just thought it should be part of the motion.
Paul, I'd like to see in the motion, the amount, please. 134,015. Do you mind?
No, not at all. I'll add that. So it's going to say, I'll reread it. Move to purchase the Chevy Tahoe Cruisers from Colonial Motor Group for the sum of 130, $134,825.16 as recommended by the sheriff, provided we have no li- no liabilities concerning the bid awarded to Quark Auto Group.
I'm sorry, Paul, that's a wrong number. That's Quark's number.
I'm sorry.
134,
And I was also going to say, add the, add that it's four in there just so that we understand how many Cruisers we're getting for the.
Okay. Purchase for, for the, for the purchase of four Chevy Tahoe Cruisers from Colonial Motor Group for the sum of $134,015 as recommended, the rest of it hasn't changed. Is that?
Seconded.
Okay, we understand the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Do you want to discuss where these would be, where the payments for these are coming from, what, what lines or what, just a general intent?
Didn't we do that, didn't we do that when we approved the bid prior?
Okay, so everybody's on, so, okay, because it's $50,000 coming from community benefits. Is that what, is that fitting in this?
No, that, that should be, that commit, that 50,000 came into there. There's $100,000 in the, in the vehicle line and we were taking the rest out of the, out of the reserve account for,
Right, that hundred,
account contract.
That 100,000 in the expense line that was contingent upon 50 coming over from CBA through the reserves. It was originally going to be cut down to 50,000, so that's why I wanted to clarify.
Okay, but that's what was done back in December, right?
Yes.
I don't specifically back and look, but I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
The last one we issued in December, we just went on the $100,000 that was in the vehicle line.
It's not 100,000, Scott. There's a 50,000 coming into your income, your revenues from CBA, and that's all Scott's referring to, and that's going to have to happen because,
Yes, yep, we're on the same page.
Gentlemen, you understand that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We, I, I just want to make sure I understand it. We're not changing anything that we did in December, except where we're purchasing the vehicles from. Is that correct?
I do not believe we are.
Why not?
Scott, why do you think, do you think we are, Scott, doing something different?
No, it's just been, it's been so long since December that I wanted to make sure that there's been discussion on community benefits, that everybody was clear that this is how this is going to transpire, so.
Okay, so 100,000 is coming out of the 7,000 account. And then the other 300, the other 34,000 is coming out of the cruiser contract reserve account. Is that correct?
The seven, the, the reserve account is 70 to 300 vehicles. There's $100,000 in that. And then the, the remainder is coming from the town contract G account.
Yep, and 50,000 transfer will come from CBA into his, into the sheriff's revenues.
Gentlemen, do you understand the finance out of this? Paul?
No, because I don't have it in front of me, but I did in December and I don't think anything has changed, so that's why I'm.
I'm good.
I just want to make sure I'm correct. I, I, I'm not trying to screw up the work here.
I think we're all good, really, yep.
I, I, I'm, I'm feeling, I'm feeling assured, Paul, that nothing's changing as far as our financing and paying for these. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Me and myself, Sheriff, you're all set with repurchase. Any idea when you're going?
I don't. I've got to obviously call Leo and then call down and tell them that we will take the vehicles. I suspect within the next week or so. You, you want a trip to Plymouth, Massachusetts?
That's a long day.
Well, it's just a spark coming back, but it's an opportunity for you to go.
Yeah, it's a long day. It's, it's too long for me. All right, gentlemen, let's move on.
I think the last item that I have, Commissioner, is in regards to the airport and Chief Kane has been working on that, so I'll defer to him to get into the discussion.
Patrick, if you unmute and talk to us about it. Approval.
Good morning. Did you folks receive the memo that I sent through last night with the estimated cost for this increase at the airport?
Yes.
You did, okay. So this has kind of been the elephant in the room since we've taken on the airport security and something that we knew was coming with the increased demand for services at the airport. I was hesitant to present this to you previously until we had actually gone through some type of process. So I had a better handle on what we would be presenting as far as an opportunity to hire someone. So we did interviews last week. I do have two outstanding young men. One that will backfill for Detective McFarland's departure and retirement. And the second one, I would propose to add additional staff for this coverage that's needed at the airport. And those figures that I presented to you are based on that second person that I will bring forward, hopefully in the very near future for you folks to consider for hiring. And that breaks it down. Here's his cost per hour, including all benefits. The only thing, that's his wages and benefits. The only other additional piece will be a laptop computer that I do not currently have. The rest of his equipment, I would propose that we, among items that we already have and or things that we will fit under our budget that we will cover. As far as a vehicle, at least in startup, I would propose that we use one of the used Cruisers that we're going to have as a result of the four that you just authorized us to purchase. So that would get us off the ground and get us through the summer. And then we would propose that we would follow it up with the budget process next year on how we go forward.
What is, what is it you need today from us, Pat?
Well, this position had never been authorized through you folks. The position that we advertised for Detective McFarland's backfill was, I'm prepared to offer a conditional offer to both these young men based on your authorization this hire today. And so that we can make that conditional offer, go through the background process for them to make sure they're fit. And if they are, then hopefully either you'll have another meeting very soon or we can get consent through email to hire both these young men and get them in and get them started.
Scott, you want to talk to us about financing this airport officer?
Well, I can, I can talk, you know, just in general terms and Leroy, feel free to jump in here or throw your hands up if I'm getting too in-depth, but Leroy and I have talked and, you know, and Leroy and Pedro always in conversation. You know, this is something that the airport has to have. Leroy's got a, a new EAS coming aboard from the air. We want to make everything successful. The airport has, I believe, has funding within its budget, even based off of the COVID year last year. We're anticipating this year should be a little bit better, hopefully. I'm, I'm predicting much better. And the third one that really kind of creates an opportunity here is that there are some special grants funding that, that Leroy is in the airport will have available, I think. Leroy, do you remember if it's three or four years? It's at least three years. It's at least two to three. I want to,
I believe it's four.
And in our minds, what this does is this will help enable us to fund a significant portion of, of an urgent, you know, need at the airport and they have to have it to make this function. And we can take a look at it after a couple of years and see how it's going. So the Chief Deputy Kane gave you numbers for 34 weeks. And I think it was like 43,000 and change, Pat, if that's, if I'm close. And talk, again, Leroy speak up if, if I venture too far here, but we're, we're kind of thinking the airport can afford to cover most, if not all of that. We're still trying to get final verification on the reimbursement from. But I think this, I think that presents a great opportunity. It's all in general terms right now. It looks pretty promising. But I think there's enough information here and, and again, with the need of the airport that you should, you, you should, I recommend that you approve the sheriff and Chief Deputy Kane's recommendation.
Well, I'd like to nail down where the money's coming from. So when you say close on that, are we close in understanding that we can use it or are we close in understanding how much we're going to get?
We're 99.9% sure we can use it. So the 40, I think here's, here's maybe a little more concrete answer. I think Leroy's in a position because he has to have it and he knows that it's, he knows the cooperative arrangement with the airport that he will fund that this year. And any additional equipment, vehicle, anything like that falls under the sheriff. Moving forward, we'll take another look at it, but he and I have kind of discussed the maximum number that he feels he should pay for the second person.
If I can just, if I can just add, you know, it was, I did petition to the TSA to go a little different route so we didn't have to go out and hire somebody and they, they denied my petition. I was, I was trying to get a, an, an on-call type of arrangement for, you know, the, maybe the early flight and the late flight to, you know, so we wouldn't have to do this. But they said not during the peak season. They, they wouldn't, they wouldn't sign off on it. you know, so we wouldn't have to do this, but, um, they said not during the peak season. They, they wouldn't, uh, they wouldn't sign off on it. Kind of left us a little stuck.
Right, it's, it's, the funds don't cover it. Um, Leroy's operational costs will cover it. We anticipate it will cover it. If it doesn't, we've got to find ways to make it happen. But this is, this is something that has to be, you know, the airport has to has, as, as we all know, the airport has to have this service, so, to function.
Well, let me out. Go ahead, John.
I was just gonna say, so right now, how many hours, um, oh, do we have to have dedicated to have a officer on duty?
Didn't your report say twenty hours, uh, Pat?
Well, this is twenty additional hours to get through this peak season, but the thing to keep in mind too is when we started this arrangement with Leroy, to get it off the ground, we also didn't provide for any backfill in there. So, any backfill that's happened throughout the course of even the winter has been done by myself, the sheriff, and thankfully with the pandemic, I've had Paul McPhail available to me, but on an ongoing basis, that's not going to be available. So anytime I have somebody that's out sick, somebody that's on vacation, um, all those hours have to be covered also, so.
So the short answer is, is that more than twenty hours of this man's time is going to be used at the airport. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think, I think, John, that we should consider that a hundred percent of his time will be there, and if he's, if he can squeak out a few for other patrol time, good. And I think we're really dedicating most of this, uh, deputy's time to the airport.
So when we did, when we did the, uh, officer, when we first started the arrangement, how many hours were we assuming was gonna get utilized under that, under that deputy? Was it twenty, or, I'm just curious?
Under the first full-time?
Yeah.
Guy Commissioner. So basically, how the, the seven days a week with the current hours of their operation, I dedicate five of those days to the full-time officer that we hired, and two of those days to the part-timer that we still currently, thankfully still have down there.
So the, the short answer again is, is that the full amount of the first, uh, deputy is assigned to the airport, correct, Pat?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're really talking somewhere around sixty, sixty hours plus to cover it during the season?
Yeah, it's actually more than that. It's closer to eighty hours, if you're in the part-time hours as well.
Okay.
Okay, so how's this? Uh, I've been crafting a motion here because we're not hiring anybody. We're just.
Oh, excuse me, just a minute, uh, before you finish crafting a motion. Let's start with the premise, Leroy, that you can take care of the full cost of the deputy, okay?
Yeah, for the balance of this year.
For the balance of this year, and it's either through the grant or through your regular operations. Uh, gentlemen, let's, I'm wondering if we can't include in there that, uh, we provide the sheriff's office funds through our technology reserve account for the cost of that laptop, which is something outside of the sheriff's budget. Is it, how do you feel about that? He says it's three or four thousand, Pat?
Big two thousand, um, I could purchase a laptop.
But I'm, I'm suggesting we take two thousand from our reserve technology account and, uh, buy the sheriff his laptop for this second airport. How do you feel about that?
I guess I want Scott to tell us where we're at with the reserve I T account.
Why be that specific? Why? Because we may find out that it can be taken care of through.
The grant.
The airport grant process, correct? I mean, we don't know all those things yet, do we?
Well, I don't think we can buy the equipment through it.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, Paul, that we're married to this motion. I'm just saying that two, three months down the road, when we get ready to approve the employment, we will have set some kind of a guideline as to how we're gonna pay for everything, that's all. Nothing says we can't change it later if money falls, you know.
That's why I, you know, here's my thinking. That's why I'm asking this question is, why put that into motion till we need to? And the question is, do we need to now?
Well, I guess if I was the sheriff, you know, I would feel blindsided if, if, at the end, what now? We said, look, we're gonna hire your deputy. Go find your own money for the laptop. I'd like to reassure him today that we will cover that cost now. Scott Edwards?
Yep, uh, can I suggest, why don't you have Chuck purchase it through his budget? And then, um, you know, if he over, he's got that line where, for equipment that's pretty general, and if he overspends it and you have concerns, you want to make transfers, we'll deal with it then. I think that kind of makes it, for me, it makes it simple.
Okay, so.
This is Chuck. Can I weigh in for a second?
Oh, Chuck, yes.
I'm looking at the, uh, reserve account, and I'm looking at the projects I have existing right now, which include, uh, email going to the cloud, wireless, and server warranty contracts being renewed. I'm gonna be pretty much at that twenty thousand dollar amount that's currently in the reserve of, account.
That's, that's your budget line, Chuck, and I'm, that's why I'm very familiar with that. That's why I said if you go over, even with your current projects, we, as we've talked, I expect you to go over. Um, if there's a concern that we transfer out of the, um, uh, the, uh, technology reserve back into your revenues, that's already established.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna throw this motion out so that we got something to talk about and we can refine it. Uh, I'm gonna move to authorize the hiring of additional sheriff department personnel for the airport security as outlined and recommended by the sheriff's department, airport manager, county and county administrator, with a laptop funded through the technology reserve account.
You know, I, that was my suggestion.
Yeah.
I should have asked for Scott's suggestion before I made that suggestion. And I really think Scott's suggestion is better than mine, that we simply say to Pat, take it out of your account. If that drives you over, we'll make things right for you at the end of the year. That's what's, that's what Scott Edgins' recommendation is, right, Scott?
No, he said technology.
I was actually referring to Department fourteen I T.
I thought you was talking about Scott. Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. Is, do you agree with Paul's motion? Is that the way we want to do it?
Just at the end, just put Department fourteen.
Instead of reserve account.
Account.
Right, that's his budget line, right, yeah. When you refer to reserve or escrow or anything like that, generally goes back to the G account, so.
Okay.
Through the budget, yep.
How does this, just so I, I'm sorry to be so green, was the laptop funded through the technology reserve account, number fourteen?
Department fourteen.
Department fourteen, yeah.
Department fourteen.
The department fourteen.
Yeah. Yeah, eliminate, uh, technology reserve or something, whatever it is you said.
Okay, I'll just say through Department fourteen.
Yep.
Yes. Uh, does that do everything you need?
It does. It does. The only question I would have, uh, a few gentlemen is, my anticipation is putting these two offers out today, doing the background will take us about a week. Um, I'd really like to get these names to you sooner rather than later, so that we can get this, I mean, I have to have these guys ready to roll out for the airport by mid-June. Can, uh, I submit those names to you, through gentlemen via email and get a tentative approval so that I can move forward before your next meeting?
Well, we'll be meeting in two weeks. You think you're gonna need that before the eighteenth, Pat?
Well, the sooner the better, so that, I mean, you've got to understand that, uh, the only thing I would ask you to understand is these are two young men that are new to law enforcement, so the more time I have with them, the better.
Gentlemen?
Now, is there an, is, is there any issue, uh, and let's just, uh, have somebody the, that name to us and us doing an approval through the email?
That, or like we did last month, move the meeting, i- if it's that dire.
Sheriff?
Well, we've had one of these candidates, uh, other departments have, uh, reaching out to him, so the sooner the we can confirm that, that we get this person, you know, again, we're not dealing with a pool of a hundred applicants. These are two, both, uh, young, they're green, so the sooner we get them, uh, the better offer gonna be.
Okay, so my question is this. We need a name before we can hire, before we can authorize hiring. I mean, I don't know that.
That's, the statute requires that we approve employment. That's the way the statute reads. Now, Pat, are you anticipating having to pay these people prior to the eighteenth?
Uh, no, I, I, no.
That's the only issue, gentlemen, is that if he was going to employ him and start paying him, he, we would, he would have to have official approval. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that, you know, in the forty years I've been involved in county government, the county commissioners have never denied a department head's request to hire an individual. We're not gonna do that to Pat. He's gonna come to us with two names after he's done a thorough investigation. We're going to conclude that he's done it the best, and we're going to, we're going to, uh, approve. And so I guess I'd, I'd like to say to Pat, Pat, you do everything you need to do, and if you come up with two candidates that you want to hire, start the process, come to us on the eighteenth, and we will give you your final approval. You know, gentlemen, it's really, it's kind of doing business, ta, you know, doing business outside of a regular meeting that we should really avoid, and, and proving employment is really an official function. Pat, can that work for you?
I'll ma, I'll make it work. I'll make it work.
It's make that work, because if you don't need to pay these people and they're not on the payroll before the eighteenth, then, then, uh, you can wait and get official approval for employment on the eighteenth.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, is that okay with you?
It's fine.
Paul?
Yes.
Okay, we'll expect that on the eighteenth, that, that agenda item on the eighteenth.
We still have to vote on the motion.
Right.
That motion is still pending?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and we, we understand what the motion is, correct?
Need me to reread it?
No, I think we're all set. John, you're all set, right?
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Longbecker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. We'll look for the names and on, uh, May eighteenth, special.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sheriff, is there anything else with regards to the jail or the sheriff's department?
No, other than the offer for you to drive down to Plymouth is still open, so.
Yeah, thanks. Then let's move on to the airport.
Got a couple of things I'd like to just add to the monthly report, um, things that have cropped up since, um, since I submitted it.
Well, the monthly report has been submitted, um, make those. Would you just give us, give it, give us that, my information through the regular meeting process here? Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, the fire truck is over at Caldwell's for evaluation. We don't really know what that's gonna entail just yet.
Evaluation of what, a breakdown or?
Yeah, yeah, the, um, the engine stopped turning over on us, so we're not really sure what's going on with it. We did, we, we went as far as we did to go in-house, and then finally it said, you know, called Dave's towing and had it towed over there. I saw George over the weekend. He hadn't had a chance to look at it yet, so. Um, we're waiting patiently.
Does that leave you without a fire truck, or do you have?
Nope, no, we have a backup, so we're, we're still okay in all of our, our, our commitments in our FAA side of the house. So, um, uh, like I said, we're just waiting to see what it is, you know, it's the, it's the old, um, big red, actually crash truck, so, um, county got it, I believe, from surplus or something to that effect, so they don't have a whole lot of money tied up in the unit. We got, you know, we got to figure out at the end. Depends on what Caldwell's comes up, but, you know, where, where we go.
That's rescue team.
Yes, that's correct, yeah. So.
And you, you, you had mentioned that issue in your report.
Yeah, so, you know, I think in, in the report, we was looking at it, but now it's over there and he, he's got it, and we're waiting for a determination. That's really all I had to add on that.
Okay.
Um.
Second, gentlemen, action in regards to the airport, uh, airport manager's report.
I'm gonna move, uh, to accept and file airport manager's report as presented.
Seconded.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of Commissioner Longbecker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. We move on to item B, Leroy.
Um, yeah, the request for approval for Jacobs Engineering to enter an agreement with Harley Ward. This is for the Eagles Nest monitoring, um, and it's all part of that, um, environmental assessment, um, for the. Just, you know, down on the end of the runway where we're trying to get some easements and so on eventually, but, um.
So I'm gonna move to approve Jacobs Engineering to enter into an agreement with Haley Ward Incorporated for Eagle Nest monitoring as presented and recommended.
Seconded.
Crazy that we gotta watch somebody, we gotta pay somebody to watch eagles, but that's the way life is.
Yeah, four hours they gotta sit there and watch the eagles, I think, like, three times a month, or something like that.
I'd like that job.
Yeah.
That was gonna say, yeah.
Fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Prepare birdwatcher.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Commissioner Longbecker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. Item C, Leroy?
Uh, approve the lease of the Office one hundred in the terminal building. There's a renewal to Main Coastal Flight Center for that space. So, the agreement.
That is an eleven-year lease?
Oh, crap. No, it should have been a two-year lease. Okay, um, let's scratch that one and I'll go back and fix it, and we'll bring it up on the eighteen.
If it's just a date, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
What is the term?
Term was two, the term was two years, I believe.
So from June first until what? May of twenty-three?
Yeah, it looks like a little number dyslexia on the backside there by me.
Yeah, the number, the, the correct dates in the document, in the contract.
Okay, gentlemen, the, the agenda item should read from June first of twenty-one to May thirty-first of twenty-three.
Yeah, the lease is correct, just the agenda.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm gonna move to approve the lease of Office one hundred in the terminal building, Main Coast Flight Center Incorporated as presented and authorize the chair to sign the lease, because the lease is correct.
Seconded.
Okay, Leroy, is it, that, that work?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Commissioner Longbecker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. Leroy, anything else from the airport?
Yeah, just a couple of noteworthy things. The FAA administrative inspection was completed. We had the, um, the debrief last week from the inspector, uh, no findings. Uh, he did have a few recommendations. We could be a little bit better on some descriptions on the paperwork, but all in all, that did go very well, so, uh, the next will be boots on the ground here sometime late summer, early fall to actually look at the facility. So, um, I, so that was good news. Uh, Cape Air, I talked to them yet last night. They gave me a call. They've already sold twenty-two percent of their seats for the month of July. So they're pretty happy with ticket sales, so that's, that's looking good. Um, the only other thing was Main Evaluation Company has a proposal for this parcel of land, um, down on the seaplane ramp that we're trying to pull out of aviation use. Have to get in, a, an evaluation of, um, fair market value. Uh, so we have to, after a bunch of phone calls to a bunch of different people, apparently that evaluation isn't that easy to get, or find somebody that can do it. Um, they, um, they're out of Gorham, I believe. So, and we have to do this in order to move forward on this parcel. I have somebody that's interested in the parcel for non-aviation use. And even if that backs out, if we move this thing forward, we'll have it, um, set, so there, there is some, some hoops to go through on that. Just wanted to make everybody aware of it.
And that looks like, just judging by this picture, that's where that Peter was rehabbed this, this year, that Troy Winter did?
Correct, and, and it's a little bit bigger than that, but yeah. Correct, it's a little bit bigger than that, but yes, it's in that area. And the original request was they wanted three hundred square, three hundred by three hundred foot spot there. With, with that, it reaches into some wetland. So I went back to the person, I went back to Jacobs, actually, and said, you know, what can we do to, to not impinge in so much wetland to make it a little more appealing to the person? And we brought it back to this particular size and shape, which was already on the airport's layout plan as being non-aviation use. We just have to get it all through the FAA and that's, you know, that's the hoops that we got to go through. So step one really was, we got to have a value to it, a fair market value to it. So we know, and that's per the FAA rules.
And would that, so the reason we have to do this is to make sure that it doesn't impact our FAA funding.
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah. So, you know, and to get it, you know, because of it being non-aviation, you know, I hate to use the word non-aviation use and fair market value, but, you know, that, those are the buzzwords that, you know, the FAA person we're talking to keeps coming around to. He sent me the advisory circular on how to, the process to get this land out. And I did ask him if the evaluation company was approved by them or, you know, they would accept it, and he said, yeah, they would, so. I tried some realtors in the area and, you know, they kept, no, they couldn't do it. They sent me to three or four people and finally somebody over in Northeast Harbor sent me to this guy. So it was, I went all around Hancock County. I was over at the Blue Hill Peninsula for a while, trying to find somebody down, ended up in Northeast and then back. I think actually the, the one guy that works for this company, I think, lives over in Lemoine. So it seems to be, you know, the only way we can move it forward and get along, you know, we get a long-term lease, we get a little more income coming to the airport. I think it's good for everyone.
Okay, let's move along.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Leroy.
Okay, thanks. Have a good day.
Do you have a domain, domain name change issue?
That is correct. I'm looking for approval to change the Hancock County domain. Currently, if you look at our website or if you look at your email address, it's the part that says co.hancock.me who else? I'm proposing that we go to a .gov website or a domain name. And the reason for that, in one word, is security. .gov domains are a lot more secure. Security is provided by a government agency and helps us protect us against ransomware and stuff like that. We are kind of mandated by the name of it. We have to include the name county or the word county in our new domain. And we're proposing that the new domain would be HancockCountyMain.gov. Well, that's what I'm looking for is approval to do that. We have to send in an application. Scott Atkins has the form all filled out. We have to get a signature on that. I think it has to be either Scott's or one of the commercials. And then we have to get a notary public seal on it. And there's four hundred dollar annual fee that is associated with this.
So I'm going to move to authorize the chair to sign the Hancock County domain change request as presented and recommended. I think that does everything we needed to.
Seconded.
Rebecca, would you also just make a note of what the name, the new name is going to be? Any further?
That's in this memo.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything, anything else, Chuck?
That was it. I don't know if we need your signature or if we need Scott's on that. Scott, do you?
The chair, I believe it was the chair, yeah, that's, I think that, I'm pretty sure that's how I typed it up. I know it is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it was addressed.
Yeah.
The chair in the memo.
Yep.
Is that ready, is that ready for signature, Scott?
It can be, yeah, it will be.
It would be, okay. Very good, let's move on to maintenance.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Dennis is off today or this week. David is with us.
Dave is, does Dave want to present or?
Yep, I'm here, ready to go.
Okay.
Start with the monthly report. Gentlemen, do you have a maintenance monthly report?
Yeah, I'm going to move to accept and file a facilities director's report as presented.
Seconded.
And I have no questions. Pretty straightforward.
The, our heat pumps, everything on that's already, well, everything on that is already pre, has already been pre-approved, right? That we're adding this, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, anything further with regards to the director's report? Hearing none, motion on the floor to accept it, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am motion carries. We're, what annex sign are we talking about, Dave?
So we're adding a third sign at the top of the current signed posts with the Hancock County seals. I believe you have a copy of that in front of you.
This is the DA's office, the DA's office?
Yes, yep.
It's the top section that's been missing, right?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm all for the colored one. It's good.
I'm going to move to approve the color version of the top of the annex sign as presented and recommended.
Seconded.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. Item C, David?
Yep, so our last thing is we'd like to ask for the approval of the hire of Ramsey Abraham II of Ellsworth as a part-time janitor at the rate of thirteen dollars per hour, limited to not more than thirty hours per week. If we could get it for May first last Saturday, that would help us get him going.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
So we're making the retroactive back to last Saturday, is that what you're asking, David?
Yes, yes, sir.
That's in the motion.
I can read the whole motion if you want.
I think basically it's as written with the caveat at the end effective May first.
Yep.
Two thousand, twenty twenty-one, correct, David?
Yep.
Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. Anything else, Dave, from maintenance?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, so we'll now recognize Julie from.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave, Dennis, Dave.
We'll recognize Julie from the Department of Deeds. Julie, are you with us this morning?
She's there, but she may not be at her desk. So we were asked to present if she was not there. So again, she has a new hire, as you see before you. Rebecca, I don't know if you want to add anything to this, Julie went, you, Julie had Rebecca involved in the hiring process, so.
So Rebecca, everything is in order for this hire?
Yep, everything is in order, yes.
I'm going to move to approve the hiring of Tracy Young of Franklin as full-time deeds clerk at grade step six C effective May fifteen, twenty twenty-one as requested.
Seconded.
Are you waiting for me?
Yeah, and the only reason I'm glad you're with us, Julie, is that traditionally you'd have to give us some some background information that would warrant a new hire going to a step C. So can you tell us something that would justify the new hire step C?
Well, she has three years customer service experience. I mean, you have to be able to deal with people. And it has worked with every other one that we've hired, so.
Gentlemen.
Commissioner, can I?
Yes, Rebecca.
Sure, thanks. So I started on the interview with Julie, with this applicant, and heard she really has some, a lot of experience in assessing and resolving customer inquiries, which is a critical piece of what that position really needs to do.
And you would support a step C, Rebecca?
I would, yeah, yep, yep, I think she'll be.
Hey, gentlemen, what's your pleasure? You all set with the motion?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries, Julie. Anything else from deeds?
Not today.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bob, we have your SEC report.
Yep.
Gentlemen.
I'm going to accept and file our SEC director's report as presented.
Seconded.
And I do have a question if.
On the, what?
Yeah, on the report. Number three, Ms. Connery, is you, you said there's, you're assessing the impacts. What are, what are those impacts? I mean, do you have an idea of what they are?
Well, at the time that we had the conference, it was before some of the legislative workshops. So one of the issues they were looking at was requiring the PSAPS to hire social workers, full-time social workers, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And we were looking at scheduling, I asked Chris Lavoy, who's the Panopscott RCC director, you know, what they had looked at. And his, his financial folks told him that if we were forced through legislation to hire these, these social workers, his impact was going to be about a half a million dollars a year in salaries because counties would have to pay for those folks. We would, they would be hired by us. We were looking at probably a quarter of a million dollars in salaries, give or take, based on a twenty-four-hour social worker being here. The, yeah, the legislation that they had proposed was very vague on, you know, what these social workers were going to do. We looked at, we were, we kind of ran the assumption that these folks were going to screen our calls and then direct us on how to respond to them. It was actually designed more for if we had a bad call, we had a social worker here immediately to, to speak with the dispatcher who had the bad call. But that has since been withdrawn. So that, the proponent of that took it back. There's other legislation out there that would address some of these things for peer support for the dispatch and correction staff and all those. But I, but I didn't want to mention, you know, that we had talked about that that time. There were some financial, some, some big financial impact if we were forced to hire these folks. Because there was no, there was no avenue for funding through the state for this additional personnel. It's very similar to some of the other things that are in the LDs where they're unfunded mandates, like our QA stuff that we do right now. That's all unfunded. The state says you got to do it, but there's no money for it. And that's been a big, that's been a big complaint. That was part of the fire protocols conversation that we've been dealing with, where we have this third-party company who provides the fire protocol and EMB protocols for medical. They dictate that you have so many calls you have to do quality assurance on, which we're required to do that without any funding from the state to cover. That's why we created the QA position, because it was up, you know, possibility of up to two hundred calls a month that we would have to have somebody sit and listen to and grade and provide feedback to the dispatchers. That was all on overtime money until we, until we created this position that Megan Kelly currently fits.
Okay, so, excuse me, that stuff, yeah, well, so number three is just basically the stuff you outlined in six.
Yeah.
Really?
Really, yeah, it's just that we had specific conversation on these, you know, for testimony and stuff like that, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else with regards to Bob's report? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. Bob, is that all you have?
I guess so.
Chair, chair could have bugged you for what? Yep, with regards to the social worker and the dispatching, I don't know if Bob had mentioned this, but the last I had heard was that this bill got pulled back.
It was withdrawn, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
He has to report in the case.
That'll teach me for not listening, sorry.
Okay.
Let's move on. I just got a quick question. So on the idea of the attic space for being used above drug, the drug court, do we think in the end if that might be something that, when some of the federal money comes, it might be able to be used or?
That was, that was kind of the idea at the time. That, that space has been one of those out of sight, out of mind. Man, we know it's there, but it really wasn't a priority. Was up there a little, a couple of weeks ago looking around and I kind of joked that it reminds me of the Blair Witch Project House in that movie where it's really kind of an abandoned space that has some odds and ends of story. I mean, there's some computers up there from the eighties that are, that are a pile. And with that, you know, there's a lot of the plaster's coming off, there's, you know, I think it just needs a little bit of rehab. I mean, we do have some pretty important equipment up there that should be, you know, we should think about protecting, you know, it's not emerging at the moment. So the idea was thinking that, you know, a great project would be to rehab that space up there. And it's a fairly good-sized room that the other, you know, the additional thought was, you know, if we had an ability to put a, put a table up there with a, with a couple of phones and a couple of laptops and a spare radio, that if we had to abandon the RCC, you know, God forbid, we have a, any kind of event down here or an illness where we have to do a major deep cleaning or a minor incident that we had to be out of here for a few days, a water leak or something that we had to vacate the space for a day or two, that we would have an alternate space to already set up that we could just run up to and move into and operate for a day or two or a few hours or whatever. A lot of agencies have those, Panopscott has that, you know, some of the others have these alternate spaces. We did, we used the training room before, which is, which is fine. But the phones aren't hooked up there right now and, you know, everything is disconnected, so it would be a process. It was just a thought as far as, you know, maybe with some of that federal money, if you're looking for projects, that might be a great project.
I thought that was, I thought that was space you had to get to with a ladder, no?
Well, there's a, there's kind of a, there's a metal stairway that goes up there. But the ladder goes to the roof, there's also the roof hatch is in that room, that there is a kind of a wooden ladder, you've got to squeeze through a little opening to get to the antennas and things up on the roof. And.
Is there, is there a better space somewhere else up there? Somewhere else that we could move that whole, all the transmitters and towers to?
Um, I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what's available up there. I know there's a hatch on the side and it's all just building trusses and things. I mean, it's really, I mean, it's been there forever, I'm sure. I mean, the cabinets that the radios sit in are, they look like seventies vintage cabinets, which they're fine. I don't know if there's another place that may require rerouting cabling and antennas.
Sure, one, yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
Very good then, let's move on. Treasurer's report, we have a warrant memo to approve.
Move to approve the April treasurer's warrant as presented.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. Anything else, Scott, with regards to our financial reports?
No, I'm good. I'll have an ARP update for you next meeting.
Then let's move on, Scott, to agenda item eleven.
So that is the ARP funding. I'm anticipating next week we may see some, it might be raining those pennies from heaven.
Well, my problem is they give us all the money that they want, and if they don't tell us how we can spend it, geez, that's.
Yeah, that's currently being worked on, and I think I mentioned this, I don't know if I mentioned it in the meeting or not, but the last word I got was, this is a couple, three weeks ago, is that may be released in stages. They may, they're attacking that at stages and they didn't say what stage first, so, you know, it could be. You know, it could be the county and metro money might get their rules first, or it could be another pot of money get their rules first.
Yeah, are they even hinting as to what we can use that for? I mean, do you have any, you don't have any sense of?
Nothing further than what they already, they've already released. I mean, basically infrastructure, you know, the, what is it called? The hazard pay was the other one. You know, and IT, we're really the only three that were, that I can recall were specifically labeled. I've also reached out to, like, I sent an email to Ed Bear from our attorney, General Representatives from Redmond Litchell. And as well as go over to Eaton Peabody, they're the ones I deal with with the TAM, because they run municipal services divisions in each of their law firms. And they haven't heard anything either. And so, you know, those are extra resources, as I discussed with them, that, you know, that might be a, a, a good service they could offer. You know, we're looking for a clearinghouse or somebody else to help cover our butt or, or whatever, you know, so.
And you said that first check is like 5.3 million?
Five point, last time I checked, it was 10.6 total, so we'll get 5.3 sometime next week. They did reach out and basically, I got this in two or three different mechanisms. Reach out with a notice indicating you want to have your guns and your CMs and your bank routing and all that information up to date. And so I took a little bit of time in the morning and double-checked all of that, got all the information. We're, like I said, sitting here, we're ready to go. So I'm thinking less this is an issue with one of those, that they've already got most of the information for us and it should be deposited.
So leaving into your next agenda item, whatnot, if we got that 5.3, would that, would that avoid us having to get a TAM?
Yeah, yeah.
If it can be used for that?
Yes. I don't see any reason, yeah, unless that rule specifically comes out, that says you can't use it for, you know, you have to keep it separate, you can't throw it in general cash flow. We're going to keep accounting separate, but even a short-term borrow from it, unless it's specifically stated, I think passes, but, you know, as long, as long as you tuck it back, but that's probably where it's going to end up coming into is our general fund, I would assume. So, yeah, I don't see any need for, for a TAM if that, if that happens. And we're still at just under, just under 700,000 right now today.
So, we halted any work on the TAM? Are we still doing?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't continue. I notified, I notified the lawyer and he was obviously understood and actually he thought, you know, he kind of was intrigued in my idea about, about offering that service. Legal services with regards to A R P monies and just kind of shifting his gears to that, to that, that type of project, so.
Have we run up any cost though? It's so far.
No.
No. Okay, anything else with regards to item B, Scott?
Nope.
On then to a continuing discussion about finance coordinator for the Treasurer's Office. Where do we want to go, gentlemen, with this? What's your thoughts?
Well, I mean, I know there'd been a little bit of discussion about trying to find someone on the outside to do a little investigating into what the other counties are doing. I'm not really in favor of that, because to me, it's just an added expense that we don't need. I think that we could get the information about the different structures, either through, a lot of it through Scott, and if Scott doesn't know the answer to what's happening and how it's being done in the other counties. I think he can easily find out without too much work, without engaging somebody else in employment. So that's my feeling on that part.
My feeling is, totally agree with John. I understand, you know, from last time Scott's points. I feel like I need a piece of paper that has sort of a proposal for us to me, from, to frame a motion around. Because I, I really don't know, I mean, I just don't have my head wrapped around exactly what it would say, that's all. I mean, I, I, I think we need finance help. Before that, I think we need a charter, but, you know, that's obviously not going to happen tomorrow. So, you, you, but it, it. I'd like a document to say, okay, here, here's, here's exactly what we're doing and.
Well, Scott created, in my opinion, he created a job description, I thought. I mean, I kind of felt like it was, maybe it wasn't to the extent that Commissioner Clark and, and yourself were comfortable with, and that's fine if we need to submit that again or define it a little bit more, I think that's fine before we do a motion on it.
Well, no, my only point is, I have no problem with the job description at all.
Okay.
It, it just, but I don't think just approving the job description gets us to where where Scott wants to go. Maybe does, I, I guess that's a question.
Specific funding? Is that what you're asking or? Okay.
No, well, I guess that's important, you know, where, where are you envisioning it coming from? Just, I'm just looking to package it.
Right.
You know, that's all. And, and maybe it is, and, you know, the, what needs to be worked on is a motion, but you, you know, I would just have a hard time writing one right now. Other than, you know, approving the job description. But I don't think that, you know, that doesn't get us where you want to be, does it?
It's a start. And I think maybe after all of the conversations, you know, the discussion last meeting and, and since, maybe I'll go back and take a, a different approach to the job description. I, I, I think I went more supervisory. And maybe a little bit higher and made the commission nervous. I'd like to find that individual, but I don't think we can, we can afford it. And in truth, I don't think we fully need it, but I think maybe if I try to tone it back a little bit and make it more intertwined with what I have out there, I'm looking, I'm looking to create a job description that leaves me options to grow. And so I think I, maybe I need to pull it back in order to, to move it forward. And if things change, we move the job description. We change it then. Does that sound like a logical plan?
It does to me. And Scott, I want to make sure, so when we've kind of talked about it a little bit, it seemed to me that you felt, at least as it stands right now, we could get by with essentially a part-time, a part-time position. If we can find someone that meets the qualifications, that's willing to take on a part-time position.
If we found a part-timer, yeah. I think that's going to be probably even, even, you know, more rare than, than finding a qualified full-time. Maybe when I was talking part-time with bringing in a, an outside vendor or, or somebody that was in, in the business, I, I had a couple of people in mind and I was to have a meeting yesterday and I think, you know, it, I think just out of sheer circumstance that it, it got canceled. And so, because I was, I wanted to know what, what direction out of today's conversation that we were going to go. Before I really put any more heavy emphasis on this. I think bringing in a full-time person is, is really what we need. Couple of, couple of things. One, you know, I knew that there would be some budgeting requirements. You know, not just initiated by the commission, but even for myself, in other words, finding savings in the office to make it efficient. And one of those, one of the positions that was up for discussion was the, the current clerical role that's out there. There is indication at this time that, you know, that, that a retirement may be on the horizon. And I've had that discussion and I even took the opportunity to make the discussion. And if I get this financial position, then I need to do something with that position. So I think I can work both where it would be advantageous to all of us. Where, you know, what looks like August of next year. So as we approach next year's budget. So that, that's one idea, is that, is that bringing in an individual. And then going from there, I, I really think this individual will, will supplement what we're already doing out there and take it off of my desk. If my plan goes well and I, I need to find the right individual. But, and, and, you know, the sooner we start it, the better off we are. And I'm encouraged from what, you know, I've been chatting with the City of Ellsworth, with the guys today. They took the approach where they advertised for two positions. They have, they have two openings. They weren't sure. One of their openings was not Finance Director, but they had two financial openings. So they went low and high. And they'd be getting a lot of resumes on the higher. So that's encouraging. I don't know about affordability. I think they have the same concerns as well. So I think if I revamp the job description and bring it back to you next time, we can, we can, I can send it out to you in between, hopefully the next meeting that I can get some, approve, get an approval for you to move forward and, and actually advertise. That would be my goal.
Sound like a plan. I don't know what the other commissioners.
Yep.
Well, I would like to see some real specificity in that job description though, because when you read the job description that Scott has, it's great at covering the overall responsibilities and duties of this individual. I keep asking myself after I read it, what exactly is this person going to do the first day they sit at their desk? What is it they're really going to do? And, you know, I, Scott deals with finance issues every day. But do we really know what he's actually doing? And, and I guess, I'm just curious. I, I'm just, in my own mind, I can't get my arms around exactly what this person is going to be doing. And then how is this going to relate to the existing staff to include an elected treasurer and who has statutory's abilities? And what are we going, how is that going to intertwine with this new position? I think, I just still, still have a whole bunch of indecisions and questions in my mind. I just can't see any resolve.
Well, I, I really feel, I think Scott can break it down in a way, when he re, when he takes a look at the job description again, to make it more comfortable for you to kind of see where, where the duties are going to fall. And don't you think you can, that's something that's pretty easily accomplished, Scott?
I think so. And it will probably take, you know, a couple of, of rehearsal sessions that Clark and I like to, to call them, but I'm, I'm open to, you know, but, you know, what did they do on the first day they're there? For me, that's, that's a training manual, not a, not a job description, but you know, and, and I'm willing to discuss how it intertwines with other things. I mean, you know, we all have to be concerned about that, but I think we've made great progress with, with addressing the issues and moving forward. And I think we should continue in that direction. You know, and if, and if we had an elected official that came in and had the appropriate training and had great ideas and that, I think I've already proven that, you know, and that I, or, or anybody that's in the leadership would, would certainly respect that and work with it. And it would only enhance things. Would it make it easier for everybody else? Sure. You know, but for me, that's a good thing, you know, it may offer, offer different opportunities, but the long-term viability, nope, yep. To get an elected official in, as we've learned and from prior discussions with proper training and to go into the step into that role and, and do all of this. And then just learn it and then be up for the next election and whether or not they want to run. I don't think that's a responsible, responsible approach for, for the commission, especially, you know, considering where we're at today.
Yeah, that points to a charter.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, you took the words right out of my mouth. That's right. That's, that's the, really, that's the way you professionalize.
That's the long-term solution and, you know, I, I, I just don't have the wherewithal. I don't have the experience yet to know how to get that going, but we somehow need to get that going.
Yep.
You know, I, I've sought some advice. You know, and there, you know, there's law around it. We're going to need some, we're going to need some help and there's probably going to be some budgetary, you know, impacts on that. So to me, that's something that probably needs to come up during budget time. But you're right, it, it, it's the structure that we're currently operating under that, that puts us in this position, in my opinion.
I've been trying to do what research I can on the formation of charters, county charters. And it is a little, I haven't found great resources yet, to be honest. I mean, you could look at this, the statutes and things like that that give you some indication, but it isn't super clear. So it would be interesting to, I don't know, maybe we, at some point, we could even contact one of the other counties that has developed a charter and kind of see how their course was, how, how it went with them, you know, to, to kind of see how it moved forward, because it seems to be different whether it's directed from outside of the commission compared to the public asking for a charter. And it's, from my, from all indication I could tell is it's, it's a long process. This isn't something that's going to, would get done. I mean, you're talking, generally, you know, you have to get to the vote, the vote section of it, that'd be 2022. And if anything happened with a number of commissioners, you'd probably be looking at them getting elected in a 2024. I mean, so it's not, this isn't, it's not going to be overnight. It takes, it's going to take some, like you said, Paul, some, some research in somebody that's had some experience doing it, if that's what we ultimately decide to do.
Well, and, and just as you outline, I reached out to Don Garrish from Eaton Peabody Consulting, just because I, you know, I know him. And that's exactly right, John, just because it's, you know, to maintain consist, consistency through different election cycles and you know, usually it's towns pressure, pressuring the, you know, county government when it's county. But yeah, you're right. If, if we did this, if we started today and we did everything right and everybody agreed, it's 18 months. And, you know, when does that happen, that everybody agrees and we do everything right, especially when we don't have a lot of experience? So it probably means helping us, you know, having to hire help to get us through it, you know, a firm or, you, you know, I'd be curious what other counties have done, but to go it alone, I, I don't know. It, it's, it's a long-term solution that takes long-term to accomplish. It, it's, it, it's not tomorrow.
And, you know, I, the subject got brought up, you know, last month or the month before, and it's been a point that's been discussed. I know in your neck of the woods, Paul, they've been lobbying for a charter from the League of Towns. And there's been hesitancy on it and I haven't necessarily supported the idea of a charter. But I've been spending a lot of time over the last month thinking about it and looking into it, reading the other county charters. And I think my, overall, my opposition to it has really kind of waned over time. Mainly because of the negative experience we've had this, these last two years, is it's kind of proven the thing we feared most happened. And there isn't a great solution to getting an experienced person in a treasurer's position. But, you know, without going to a charter and kind of essentially pulling that away from being an elected position, which is unfortunate that it couldn't be an elected position or that we couldn't do a change in the legislature to make it put in qualifications like we do for a sheriff, but that's not going to happen, so.
And, you know, the communities that are actually looking for finance directors and that, I mean, even when they're empowered to just hire somebody instead of, you know, having it being a pointed position, is still having trouble filling those vacancies. You know, so, yeah, it's challenges all around.
So I'm, I'm good for going forward with Scott, kind of re-refining things a little bit more, rejiggering it a little bit. And then coming back to us, because we're going to have to come up with a solution and we can't really dilly-dally on it, I don't think, too long. I don't want to, I don't want to go head, headlong into it, but it needs to happen. So that's, that's my feeling on it.
Why don't we take some baby steps today towards looking at what it would take to get a charter? My sense is, is that I'd spend a few bucks to have a professional come and make a presentation to us on the type of setup where we three today agree that we'd like to have a charter, so it's not like we're being pressured by the municipalities or an outside entity. And see if we can get a framework for what it would take to get a charter. And maybe what that would accomplish beyond, you know, appointing a treasurer and other aspects to see if it's even worth the effort. You know, appointing a treasurer and other aspects to see if it's even worth the effort.
How about this? I I got an email from Don Gares, just outline, you know, put it in a nice little. Nice little, you know, compact package. Just an email and the state law. I'll forward that to the administrator and he can send it. And I think that would help us frame the discussion. Take those baby steps. Hopefully, that'll save somebody else from compiling the information that he didn't. If it's trash, you can delete it, but I think it's probably worth, you know, everybody getting it.
I think other than the first, you know, other than the first step, which for me is, you know, is the, you know, the commission to at least can. Consider it or at least, you know, have open, open mindedness enough to to make the effort for. I think. You have to establish a charter commission.
Yeah.
And they take a look at this and bring it forward to you and we may, you know, and at that point, when that starts happening and the mediation of it all. Maybe we need, maybe we need a consultant then. But you know, the good news, I think one of the positive things is is that, as John pointed out, I think. You know, this was presented before. I believe the gentleman was from Blue Hill. I don't know how well the presentation was, but there was no. Serious consideration for it whatsoever, so it kind of died on the table. But there was a lot of interest there. As John indicated, the League of Towns has continually talked to me about this. So I can reach out to the to the League of Towns for resources, but I think Don Gerish is a is a great, great option. And also, as Commissioner Wambach has said, I can I can chat with a couple of counties that that have gone through the same process.
Yeah, and and the email I I just for or I'm forwarding you that email. I mean, it it's not, I'm not advocating hiring him. It's just he put it in a nice, neat little package for us to think about. And then I say we go from there after we've all had a chance to review that. That's almost separate from the discussion we're having on that.
And and I would encourage. The other commissioners and Scott to. Pull up the charters that the other counties have done, because when they're pretty easy to find for the most part and. When you read through them, you kind of see what the step in a lot of ways, what the steps are, because it's it's within the charter once it's established. And. Then if you look at the statutes, it it does kind of break down the steps like Scott mentioned with establishing the. The the committee or commissioner, I forget what it's how they term it, but so. I'm just saying that that'll also help just so you so you can see the overall. And you can also see how each county does it a little different. And what the differences were in it. So. That's just something that might be interesting to everybody to read about, because I I found it interesting as I read through them.
Yeah, and there's a few on our shared drive.
How big a document is the chatter itself, John? How?
They're not that, to my experience, wasn't they weren't that long, maybe? Five to six pages.
That's it?
Yeah.
Oh, my God, I thought we were talking about volumes.
No, no, and as as John says, I think they all were like, you know, they and they're all different. I mean, they all have the basic structure, the legal structure, but they're all different because they all have different needs. And so they, you know, they kind of adapted to what they what they were looking for, whether they some changed the being, you know, the number of commissioners, some didn't. Some changed, you know, went for more than just one elected official. I'm not advocating that publicly. I am not advocating that. And, you know, so different, you know, different strokes for different poles is is how they've approached it.
Yep.
Okay, so I think we've.
Yep. So I'll review the job description and work with, especially with the all work link, which has concerns, but Commissioner Clark. You know, you and I are not, you know, afraid of having conversations, so whatever I can do to.
Send that information out that Paul had and.
I think you send it to everybody.
My habit is to send it to the administrator and then you can.
Considering these chatters are only five or six pages, I'd love to see two or three of those just to see. What they contain, what we're what we're looking.
Yeah, they're on the shared drive. I I forgot exactly where they were, but there's a Rebecca, there's a folder with. Some examples.
And I I think I have a few in my records over time, but yeah, if not, I can easily get them.
The main county commissioners page has.
There you go.
Yeah, it has a list of the four or five county charters on there and some statutes and pros and cons of county charters. I can send you that link.
Yep. Some of those links aren't good, but you can try.
They're not.
Some of them, yeah, we've got you to nowhere, but the lower research that can be found.
Okay, so with regards to the finance coordinated position, you're going to send us something. In the way of an updated modified job description. And we're going to have a discussion on this charter thing at another meeting sometime later, okay?
Yep.
Let's move on then to a discussion, a review of TIF and CBA. Community benefits.
Would it be easier if I just asked if does anybody have any questions? Do you want me to kind of review this or? Under easily understood?
We got those reports and are those the ones that were in a box? Is that were they in a box? You said that they were in the office. Financial reports you said were in the office.
Oh, no, you're probably referring back to the quarterly reports that I sent to all the department heads, and I think I see CBA's on on those.
Was the TIF and CBA reports in with those?
No.
No, he said it is an email.
Yeah, I it was part of our our meeting packet online.
I thought I said, did I send it out to any in an email? Did anybody?
Or Rebecca did as part of Rebecca.
Yeah, it should be. It should be in the book bill under the treasurer's section. I think that's what Patrice put.
No, all I got was the warrant memo in there and there's nothing under the county administrator. My problem is is that I depend, I I depend on had copies when I pick my book. And if it's not in there, I don't I don't retain the. Stuff electronically. I can go back and get it, Scott, so.
Good.
I'll get it. Can you tell me what the balance of the CBA account is?
Right now is eight hundred and thirty nine thousand, eight fifty oh three. That's the balance in your spreadsheet. And that that does not take into account the hundred, the other hundred thousand that's dedicated. That's just undedicated.
So there's a there's. There's another hundred thousand that's been dedicated. It hasn't been transferred yet.
And it won't be. Well, it will be fifty for that vehicle for the SO, remember. And then the other fifty is for the budget. Which probably won't be needed, but.
Okay.
But the eight thirty nine, eight fifty oh three is the undedicated balance minus any expenses, current expenses. And remember, the other three hundred and eighty eight thousand or so of revenue coming in that will for this year.
And you have the Bull Hill TIF in front of you, TIF amount.
Do I? Yep.
What is that figure?
Bull Hill TIF right now is two ninety five, three fifty six ninety two. Two nine five, three five six point nine two.
Hancock Wind?
I can get somewhere. Hancock Wind is three twenty four, two forty four, forty four. Three two four, two four four point four four.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments with regards to TIF and CBA?
Still learning this.
Well, you understand what we're talking about, of course.
Yes, I do. It it was in his report.
Yeah, so the community benefits is then is what we can use for the count. It's more, you know, more open for use and the tips are restricted, but yeah.
And the restrictions, we've always said the restrictions on the TFC and whatnot could. Leave us unable to really expend that that full amount. It's 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 really tough to find. A way to productively use the TIF money because of the restrictions associated with it, but. Nevertheless, it's there. It's available under the right situation. CBA, of course, is is far more ranging and gives us a lot more options than that, so.
So. On the TIF. So we we put in that work to try to talk about establishing a loan program through it. And I kind of feel like COVID happened and it just disappeared off the radar. And so I'm kind of wondering, are we going to go back to that and see if it's something that we can? Do or have we just kind of? Given up on that idea?
I think COVID put a, like you said, put a halt on it. And since tho- those individuals.
Yeah.
Kind of kind of lost interest as well, right, wrong, indifferent, I guess. You know, as Mr. Clark pointed out, you know. If we could find effective, proper use of that money that could really help the area where it was intended to, then that, you know, that would be a worthwhile investment. So a couple of things come to mind. One is, is, yeah, maybe we bring back Ms. Barbie. And maybe she can maybe we take some funds and help us develop that program even further. Might look at an economic development position possibly, or even just a project, you know, a certain time period for that to kind of advertise it. And to develop it and then to, you know, maintain it. Which is another reason, go back to my finance position, is if we did something like that, I would, you know, we wouldn't want to have somebody else in this office to help facilitate those. And then the second idea is that boat ramp again. We had talked about that over at Fletcher's Landing. You know, I went by there the other day, just cruised around and that. Standby is, I don't even know if you did a kayak to there. So, you know, those are things that once we if we can get back to maybe if we can get Miller back and and. Get people's interests and get away from COVID concentration, that, you know, we can start looking at things like that.
That's fine. I just want to see if we have a plan on. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What was the other thing I wanted to mention on? Oh, on so on the difference between community benefits and TIF. The one thing you I I think you want to keep in mind on the TIF payments and the future monies coming in. You know, I think you're looking at, just as we saw with that abatement, that's just the tip of the iceberg. You know, another two or three years later, you can probably see the other one wanting to do it. So that because the TIF payments are based on valuation, the CB money should be pretty solid. Because that's that's a contract. That's a that's a guarantee, you know. Unless they unless they go belly up, but.
Okay, gentlemen, we okay with TFCBA?
Yeah.
Then. This perpetual COVID nineteen issue.
Yeah. So as we all know, the governor, the governor is kind of loosening up restrictions. I think common phrase is kind of. You know, the 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 new, the new policy is kind of guided by what people are already kind of practicing and doing. So I'm going to release an updated memo with regards to our operational and it's simply to address that. You you don't have to wear a mask from, you know, from your car into the building, you know, you know, we still need to wear masks inside the building, especially dealing with public. Still need to carry all those concerns, but that mandate has gone away. And the second one of the traveling restrictions, which we basically referred them to the governor's policy in the last memo. But there were a lot more restrictions back then. So again, just to update people. And then the only other conversation I really wanted to have today, and and I wasn't looking for a decision. Just to kind of prick the bubble is on anticipated, your individual thoughts or ideas on anticipating anticipating of opening up the, you know, the building, public. You know, meeting in person. In general, I'm thinking June at the earliest, which probably is too early, so July. Yeah, that's all. I still have to talk with the courts. I mean, you know, I think they're an important piece of this before we do officially open back up, but. If you have no opinion to offer today, that's fine. I just thought I'd bring it, bring the topic.
The courts opened up, Scott?
I haven't been up there for a while. I think they're still kind of on a intermittent schedule.
Are they allowing the public in?
When they have security, they are.
In terms of having meetings in person. You know, I've I've been a little bit of an advocate for us to start planning on meeting again. I guess when I envisioned that, if that were to happen this summer, I kind of envisioned it pretty much that we'd be. In person, but it wouldn't necessarily be an open meeting and that like when I could start crowding people into that small commissioner room. The five of us. I believe have all been vaccinated. Now, okay, okay. All right.
I I haven't yet because of a procedure, but yeah, I won't go any further than that.
Okay, your intention is your intention is to get. So to me, the only way we'd be do it is if in the room would be as if all of us were vaccinated. At least with the numbers they're at right now. And so, I mean, it's a little frustrating that the numbers are still. As high as they are, you know.
Well, the the problem, though, John, is that we need technology to allow the public to participate remotely. So we're going to have, that's that's you can't do that with Zoom in that meeting. So Chuck would have to come up with, are we working towards that, Rebecca?
Chuck's Chuck's been working on it.
Yeah, yeah, we have been working on that. It's not ready yet and would have to go through several trial runs, but. That that's something we can definitely work out.
Well, John, tell me, though, if only five of us were in that room and four of us were vaccinated. Isn't that suffice?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, I mean, I could I could live with it, I guess.
I don't know. I really don't understand all around.
I guess you're right.
I'm just wondering if, you know. And we still could maintain distance. We did that before. You know, with me down on the on the lower level and and the other two at the extreme ends of the podium of the seating up above. So I think we could still maintain, you know, that six foot distancing. So. I think the key there probably is technology and getting the public to be able to join us remotely.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up, because it's going to take Chuck some time. As Rebecca said, we. Were really, you know, we put it on the fast track before we stopped meeting in person. Just for that reason, that's where we were headed, was if it was just us in the room and, you know, for public access. And of course, when that stopped, you know, we went to remote completely. Everybody got used to that. We we kind of stopped the project, you know, and Chuck's got a lot going on, so it would take him some time. So that's why I wanted to gauge it today to see what you were thinking. Is do I have to, you know, get Chuck going on this now or, you know, is it is it an urgent need at this point?
To me, it's it's a higher priority to start meeting back in person than it is to open up the courthouse. I think we're we're still providing our services. But I I think getting back, you know, it's just like resource material. I just don't have half of what I need here at home that I have at my office. And unfortunately, since we had the new desk put in. I haven't been able to rearrange and, you know, to what I what I have there. And in fact. I've lost a three wing minder. And I guess it's it's I just I don't understand what could have possibly happened to it, but. It has my union contracts and the county policies and stuff in it. So anyways, so. I I really think I my priority is getting back to meeting together and. I'm willing to put off opening the courthouse until we can really feel comfortable doing that, so. That's my opinion.
And I know I know Chuck's been working on it. I've been in there when even when he's been working on it, when I was doing warrants, he was in. Doing checking the cameras, seeing how it works within the space. And I know they're working on the mic system. So, I mean, it's not that we're starting from scratch. He has been working on it, just obviously. Fine tuning it so that the public sees it and the audio is right and all that, I think, is kind of where he's at. So. I think is so as he can carve out a little time here and there, we should still be able to have it happen sometime this summer.
Okay. Yep, I'll work off that then.
Okay. That completes our agenda. Gentlemen, is there anything else? Attention to our next meeting is May eighteenth. Mission meeting. Hopefully, they'll, I don't know, hopefully, but. Conditioned upon having enough business to handle, so.
I'm going to move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Oh, she made to adjourn. All those in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry? And I am myself. We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks.